To order, and would like to welcome everybody here this evening. We will begin this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to add, ask Commissioner Barnett to please lead us in allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if there is someone in the crowd that would like to speak on an item that is not appearing on the agenda, please come forward and state your name and address, and the microphone is yours.
Thank you, sir. Ken Brown, 1396 Lubbock Street, here in Sonoma. I'm proud of you guys, and I look forward to a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Good evening. My name is Mary McDevitt, and I'm a retired physician living here in Sonoma. And looking at the agenda, I see no mention of the fifth generation for the Internet use. Am I to understand that is not going to be discussed tonight?
I'll defer.
It would appear that this is a comment related to an agenda item. The 5G is a level of service for small cell facilities, and that will be discussed and is a part of the presentation that is the first item on the agenda.
So through the chair, back to you.
Okay, I will save my comments then until after the presentation. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on. To my fellow commissioners, we have an opportunity to review the agenda. Do we, are we accepting it as presented?
I do.
Okay. No exceptions?
Okay.
Staff, do we have some late correspondence?
Yes, we have late correspondence on the item here before us tonight.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I failed to remember a couple of housekeeping items. One is, please, out of respect for the decorum in the meeting, that we, any cellular devices, that we go ahead and put them on mute or off. And the second item I want to just mention is that I am pleased to see that we have a strong gathering this evening for a topic that is of great interest to many people. I do request that we maintain a proper civility, decorum. We do know that examples of proper decorum has not always been exhibited back in Washington, but we're here in Sonoma, so I'd like you to respect those that are speaking, respect those that come to the dais, and the goal is to have a very proper exchange of information So now we move on to the approval of past minutes of the special meeting of March 22nd. Do we have any comments or corrections from what has been written?
I was in attendance at that meeting. I wasn't listed in the attendance. That's the...
So noted. Any other comments? Do I have an motion?
I move that we approve the minutes of the special meeting of March 22nd, 2018, with Commissioner Cribbs edit.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. One of the items that I want to mention regarding our hearing is that we have kind of a three-step dance this evening, actually probably a little bit more, but the first step is we are going to have an opportunity for a general presentation regarding the topic. And so there'll be the presentation, an opportunity for the commissioners to comment, raise some questions, and it'll also be an opportunity for the public to also come forward in regards to the presentation. After that is brought back to the commissioners, then we'll be moving on to the item 7.2, which is the specific application for two of the cell tower locations, and then the third one, 7.3, will be the third location, and we've broken that up because one of our commissioners here will have to recuse himself because of proximity. So again, we're going to start with a presentation, a general presentation. There'll be the opportunity for commissioners to comment, raise questions to staff or to our consultants, and then also it'll be opened up for the public. And then we'll move into the specific agenda item, 7.2. So with that, I'd like to direct the program to Lee and to give us Mr., give us your presentation, Mr. Afflerbach.
See if that's all working here. Is my audio on here? Is it working? Can you hear me now? It's a good way, good way to start a commercial here for the telephone company. But let me give you a commercial first. I'm Lee Afflerbach. I work with a company called Columbia Telecommunications. We're consulting firm that works exclusively for local government. We do not work for any of the carriers. Loud, enter. Okay, you're going to get it. I do not work, our firm does not work for carriers. We work for local governments. Our job is to try to provide objective analysis, input, and turn it over to the decision-makers to make the decision. So we're not hired to do that. We're hired to look at applications. We're hired to provide information to the public, which we see as legitimate and correct. And I'm sure many of you have, may have different views, but I respect yours and I hope you respect mine. I do come from Washington DC area, but I do not bring the hostility, okay? Okay. And I will try not to talk too engineering. Are we ready to go with the... Okay. See, you can never trust technology people. Get six...
You got that one right.
[laughing] You never know what's in the box. Everybody still awake? Good, okay. All right, so the purpose of this presentation is to go over a number of items here. The first one, overview wireless, commercial wireless systems. Can we back it up there? Come on. Okay, great. All right. Okay, from here on, it's going to be smooth. Overview wireless systems, probably something that mystifies all of you, and even myself in the business, 4G, 3G, 6G, whatever G we're on right now. Enhancing macro site performance, small cells where they fit in the picture. I've won, and I know you're all interested, but I can tell by the labels, RF emission, and last but not least, 5G. Let's go, let's just start over the little history here. It's always good, any technology subject, it's always good to get, start from the beginning. Way back in the late 1960s, early 1970s, it became apparent that there was a need to upgrade the mobile phone service. We had mobiles phone service, it's gone for a long time, but only the very rich had that capability. All right. Okay, so it's...
Don't trust technology, brother.
That's right. I should have brought my joke book or something. Okay, so as you, as you're probably well aware, the initial systems were set up using towers, typical cell towers that have been around for decades now, were set up to operate in the 800 or so megahertz range, and they were set up primarily for voice communications. Typical tower had, as you can see, multiple levels where each of the various carriers operated their systems. So you had AT&amp;T, of course, these have had, come over numerous names, but basically, each level is occupied by a individual carrier, and the towers, in fact, are typically owned by investors. They lease these towers out. The land is leased to the tower owners, and in most cases, not all cases, but in most cases, they, they provide service typically out to three, four miles. And they're primarily, as you can see by these photos here, are installed in areas that tend to be either rural, or they tend to be areas where they're industrial, and they don't stick out too much. They're not too objectionable. And, and so, let's go to the next slide. As you can see, the topology or the way these are set up for existing so-called 3 and 4G, that's the generation. The current service you have here in this city is 4G generation, fourth generation service. It is the service that's been around now for about eight, eight years in wide use. And basically, it's been a very successful product. When the systems were first installed, they operated at the 700 megahertz band. This was spectrum that at one time used to be used by TV channels. It was taken away from the TV operators and was actually sold off to the commercial operator. So that was one of the things that the government did, and that, we're talking 20-some years ago that this took place. And you'll note here that, as you've probably observed in the field, that typically the antennas are arranged in 120-degree radios, and basically each one of those is an individual radio, radio that talks to a sector from there. So if you look at a system, a typical system, if we were to design, look at it down from above, you'd see that the towers are spaced typically at mile and a half, three-mile intervals. There'd be multiple antennas, and the sector antennas would cover a certain area. And as long as we were dealing with telephone communications, that worked out very well because it's a narrow band with technology, the coverage range was, was in the order of three, four miles, and there were not that many users. When 4G came into use, however, and the smartphone at the same time, I don't think anybody anticipated what the demand was going to be. So if you were one of the first early 4G users, like I was, you were just amazed at how powerful this system was. But as each neighbor got this service, I guess you can imagine what happened. We're all sharing the same party line, which gets to be slower, slower, and slower. So the industry was faced with really two things. One is getting devices, phones, out in the field, and the other thing they had, were had to do is to realize that they had a limited amount of product, the product determined by the bandwidth and the coverage area of the system. Let's go to the next slide. About that time, the solution was, well, that's easy. We'll get more spectrum. And so, spectrum that was used for other purposes, primarily microwave and other, other short-range uses, was, was available. That was sold off to the carriers, and I put this graph together to show that these other bands, which are higher-frequency bands, provided quite a bit additional capacity. That was good. That additional capacity meant that, that now users had higher speeds. The downside unfortunately was, is you see by, this is engineer artwork, by the way, the coverage area was quite a bit smaller. What did that mean? If you had to live near a cellphone, if you had to live near a cellphone, what you ended up with was a, a very strong signal and higher-speed service. If you were further away from that, the downside was unfortunately, you didn't get the advantages of that. And so, they had to come up with some way to solve that problem. Let's go to the next slide. And that's where, why we're here tonight, to talk about small cells. And the idea is pretty simple. That is, that you augment the large cells, the high-capacity cells, with smaller cells in neighborhoods. And they have very different attributes. Remember, the original cell towers were typically 150 feet, 100 feet tall, and large antennas. These have smaller antennas. Typically, they're in the range of a utility pole, which is typically somewhere in the order of 20 feet or mountain opportunities, or at the top of the pole could be as high as 50 foot. But the coverage areas of these are much smaller. Instead of having miles of coverage area, a typical cell site has a coverage area somewhere in the order of 500 to 600-foot radius. Little more, a little less, and we've done many studies to go through that. But the facts are that it takes a lot of small cells to get the same kind of capacity. And you can see the small cells there. They operate at the exact same radio frequencies, and they basically cover the areas where the large cells do not cover. Next slide. So I want, I want to divert for a minute to point out that not only have they used small cells, but one of the other things that's been done in the industry is that they've made the current 4G technology more efficient. They've done that by new technologies, being able to put, put data faster through the system through what we call quadra modulation increases. They've, they've provided more sectors. They've provided, we call, multiple antennas. Basically, all the whiz kids' ideas that could come up with have been put into 4G technology, and we really have now what you might want to call 4G-plus technology, which is quite a bit of an enhancement over the original 4G technology. So think about this technology such as we've moved to different kinds of equipment. Many of you I'm sure have been through five or six different smartphones besides dropping them. Sometimes you need to, need new technology. And as we move forward, one of the things that goes on in this industry is we have to remain compatible with older equipment. So we'll find many times we're out looking at systems, that they still support the 3G technology, the 4G technology, and later we're going to talk about 5G technology. You've got to be able to support all of these technologies at the same time. Hence the need for enough spectrum to operate in multiple bands and also to be able to simultaneously operate and expand. Next slide. These cells are typically connected by fiber optic cable, and here's an example of some utility poles that have small cell antennas on, and they're either connected by fiber that's on the poles, or in many cases, it's underground fiber. I might add that the fiber often is existing fiber. Typically, for example, Comcast is in the build, business of leasing fiber optic cable to the cable, to the wireless operators, and that's one of the ways that they connect their systems up. And the reason you need fiber optics is because each one of these cells is sending data out at several hundred megabits, and the only way you can get that kind of technology is through fiber for so-called fiber backup. Next one. Now, the first thing that we, on the left here, give an example of a, of a typical wireless small cell. The first generation were, I guess at best you could say were ugly. These were antennas, had multiple antennas on the poles. As you can see here on the left, there is a, is a multiple antenna. At the bottom of the equipment, this particular site is in, in Maryland, the, in the bottom there is the electronic equipment, at the top, the antennas. The industry has moved to sites that are more appealing, I guess is the best way to put it, than the older sites. Typically, you have a single antenna, and it's either installed at the top of the antenna of the pole, or it's installed down lower, where typically we call the communication zone. That's where you have the cabling that's used for, for cable TV, for telephone low-volts. There's no power in that particular area. So the two opportunities that they have to install antennas are at the top of the poles, and that's typically six foot above the high voltage lines, so often new poles have to be put in, or they have to be extended with another, another pole adapter, or they're going to be side-mounted or mounted in the communication space, which is typically about 22, 23 feet above ground. It varies from pole to pole, but gives you an idea of the range. Next slide. Here's some examples of the side-mounted systems, and generally, these are engineered site by site. In other words, it's not ditto this design everywhere. It really depends, the coverage requirements the carrier has. It also relates to terrain. One of the problems that you have with this technology is that as you get higher and higher in frequency, electronic waves do not go through trees very well, and consequently, you need more of these devices. So I want you to realize that, that if you go back, you look at these designs, so you may say, well, why are some of these closer and why are them farther apart? It has to do with the engineering studies that they do to determine the propagation or transmission characteristics. So they are, there, there is design engineering work, but it's, I think you'd find that even more boring, my presentation, so we won't get into that, but aware of the devil's in the detail. Now, one of the issues that continually comes up in public hearings and concerns of the public are RF radiation. All of these sites that are looked at, whether they be the, the large sites, the high-capacity sites, that we saw, the so-called macro towers, or the smaller towers, here, these small towers, all of them have to conform to federal radiation standards. Now, these standards have been around for a long time. The standards that we use right now actually have their genesis way back in the late 1960s, early 1970s. And in those days, of course, we didn't have a lot of cell towers, but we did have a lot of radio stations, TV stations, police radio, all other kinds of radio devices that were emitting RF signals at that time. So I want you to all be aware that this is not like this is something new. This is something that's been a concern. For example, I also work in the broadcast industry. One of the things we don't do is when we're working on transmitters that are 50, 100 kilowatts, we turn the power down. We make special compensation. That's one of the things that's looked at here. The FCC has been charged by Congress to set these standards. The first set of guidelines that they had out was early in 1985 for these kinds of devices. And if you really are interested in it, there's plenty of online information here from the FCC, which I have copies here, and if you have trouble sleeping, you'll find this is perfect. This will help you along. That is, the document I'm showing you there is the FCC Guidelines, OET Bulletin 65, and that shows you in detail how these units are calculated and what the FCC has set as the standards. And the standards that they have have been adopted based on the input that they have gotten from the health community, engineering community, and other professional associations. The actual standards, as I said, I am an engineer, and so when we look at these applications, we look at them in the context of the procedures that the FCC sets out for setting these standards. I know that a lot of communities have different concerns here, and I'm no doubt going to express them tonight. I just want the board here, the planning board, to realize that the standards are quite rigidly set out, and the algorithms for actually compliance with the FCC standards are defined in the... Next document. Next... Okay, and these are some of the parties that are involved in it. The National Council of Radiation Protection is a group set up by the federal government to look at this. The IEEE, which is a professional organization I belong to, and, and as part of the rulemaking, the original rulemaking, and the ongoing rulemaking, I might add, they have continually been receiving comments from, from the NIH, from all the other health agencies in this country. And that's where these, these standards come from. They are not set by the, the companies. And let's, with the next slide, give you an example here. First of all, we talk about RF exposure. We're not just talking about exposure at the cell frequencies. You notice here, this chart covers the spectrum from, down from power lines all the way up to radar, and so in there, we've got radio, we've got television, we've got also, all sorts of devices. So cell devices are just one of many devices that you're going to find in your community, radios. And let's go to the next slide, give a little better example of that one. Here's some of them, and just to give you an idea. TV stations, towers that house TV stations, radio stations, they can be up in the megawatt range, and very common. Macro cells, like the ones I showed you at the very beginning, today's macro cells, in fact, I just calculated some for City of Piedmont, one sector has 30 kilowatts of power. So they are very high-power, those devices. The small cells we're talking about here typically are about 1,000 watts or less. They're relatively low-power. They're on a, on this parallel with kinds of radio that we use in public safety. Also, another area where we find a lot of these things are on ham radio operators. If you happen to be, I happen to be a ham radio operator, I'll come out of the closet on that one. And my transmitter is capable of about 10 watts, 10,000 watts.
10,000 watts?
Yes.
1,000?
10,000.
1,000.
ERP.
2,000 is ERP.
No, it's, but the actual radiation with a 10, with a 10 dB gate antenna is 10 kilowatts. Okay? All right. Got my math quiz for the day. Okay. And, but the ones that I think that most of you may not think about is the, are the devices like the microwave that you have in the home, the hotspot. How many of you have Wi-Fi hotspots at home? Okay. Typically, those have about a 1 watt radiation capability. And you may say, well, that seems very small. When you realize that the, the amount of radiation is a function of the square of the distance, you see the difference that you may... Okay. So you'll, you'll see that, let's go to the next slide. Okay. So the way that the FCC guidelines are set up is fairly simple. You look at the effective radiating power, that, that is actually the power that's being radiated away from the device to the point of interest. And that typically is the power of the unit multiplied by whatever the power amplification factor is, or we call a gain for the antenna. So an antenna that has, is aimed in that direction, a directional antenna, may have a gain... a gain 10 times as much as a simple omnidirectional antenna. You'll see in that chart there that the way the standard's set up, that the actual permissible radiation is a function of the frequency. And if you look at the left-hand side of the chart there, what you see is that the maximum radiation that can be provided is most sensitive in the range from 30 megahertz to 300 megahertz. Beyond that, more radiation. This is basically the amount of radiation that can be accepted safely by the standards set by the commission, the FCC. And so the first question you may ask is, well, yeah, but what, isn't there lots of kinds of radiation out there? And the answer is yes. And typically, when these are calculated or examined, one of the things that is done is that we look at the various sources of emission, we look at the frequency, we look at the amount of energy there, and the total of all that energy in any one location cannot exceed the FCC guideline. So it's really an integration of all the energy coming in there. And this is a great math problem, if you really want to enjoy doing mathematics. But to make it simple, it's usually expressed, the value that is involved is a percentage above or, excuse me, below the permissible radiation as set by the FCC standards. Now, if you look at the equation here, what you see is the actual power density, which is permitted, is really a function of the distance, the square root of the distance. So in other words, as you get closer and closer, the actual power density gets higher by the distance, the square, the difference of the square of the distance. So, for example, if you get a foot, if you double the distance away, you reduce your radiation by four. Every time you double it, you reduce your radiation by four. So what that means is that all these radiation sources that you have have to be relatively close to really get into the sum of the field. And I'm more kind of belaboring the point, but since I see so many stickers here bringing the subject up, I want you to be aware of that. So when you're looking at this, we're not just talking about when the calculations are done on these projects, we're not just looking at this cell site or this particular project. When I say "we," I mean the engineering community. We're looking at all the sums. For example, if you're fortunate enough to have a ham radio operator across the street, we'd have to put that into the mix. If you were across the street from a police station dispatch center, we'd have to put that into the mix. And that's the way these are evaluated. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, we beat that to death. Let's move on to 5G technology, because I think that, I think that one of the things we have to understand here, that one of the reasons we're putting these cell, we, the industry is putting these cell sites into place, is small cells, is to provide a platform for deployment of 5G technology when that technology becomes available. Just as in the past, when they added 4G to the 3G technology, additional antennas were put into place, those antennas operated simultaneously with the new ones, and eventually, when the old phones all disappear, then the old spectrum or the old capacity is renewed to have the new services on. So that same thing's going to happen here. What's going to happen is, when 5G technology is deployed, we're going to have much higher speeds. We're talking about factors of at least 10, probably 100 times the throughput we have with current systems. And you may say, well, do we need that? And the answer is, it appears to be yes, because every system that we see out there these days is running faster and faster and faster. People have moved from using broadcast TV off the air to actually using wireless or other technologies for IP technology. Another thing that's happened is more and more devices are being connected. More devices creates more capacity. So we have applications that have higher resolution, more data requires, we've got more users, everybody's got at least one phone. Should we be glued to it? That's not my issue, but that's where we are, unfortunately. And what's more important now is probably every device we've got is communicating with the internet one way or another. And when 5G is deployed, it will be ubiquitous. And that means literally, you don't have to connect to it. It automatically will connect to the internet and to the systems. So as part of this technology, the placement of the small cells do really three things. One, it provides better uniformity of service. What I mean by that is, if you happen to be at the base or near an existing macro tower, then you've got good service. The further you get away from the macro tower, because the signal is weaker, the quadrature modulation changes, you have slower service. So bringing these small cells into the neighborhood provides more capacity. The second thing it does, it provides more capacity to context that you have a smaller service area for access point, which means that you're, if you think of a pie, you're sharing that pie with a smaller group. So you then have more capacity. And finally, having those devices there provides us an avenue to put 5G in. 5G technology, as the industry sees it now, is going to require more bandwidth. The only place that we can get more bandwidth is higher frequencies. As I told you before, higher frequencies don't travel very far. So that's why this tech, we're leading toward this technology. We can, we can eventually, what happens is, if you tried to use the tall cell technology, the macro cell, and continue with that technology, you just would never be able to get signals into many of the key locations. And I know that many of you experienced that, your cellphone works outside, doesn't work in the home. That's why these, the small cell technology, it's important, because it brings the signal close to the neighborhood. It also is, the signal levels are involved are relatively, relatively low. To give you an idea, the kinds of numbers we typically see in a new small cell installation is that the small cells themselves generate a signal level that's probably about 10% or less of the FCC permissible value. Is one more slide, or?
One more.
One more, okay. So here's an example. Again, as I mentioned, pretty much amplifies the same thing. We're talking about small cells, we're talking about more use for this technology, not just communicating with people, but communicating and controlling other objects. And what's even more important is the fact that the small cell technology permits similar coverage in buildings, and also is, provides an ability to get through various foliage limitations we have. I thank you for your forbearance.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, again, we're having a few technical difficulties, but one thing that may be the prerogative of the commission would be to have Q and A with the commission before I begin my presentation, or I can do my presentation with respect to the city council action of this week. So whatever is the wish of the board, the commission, we can do that.
Do we have questions for this?
Of course.
Of course.
I have three questions, and I'll just give them all to you. My first question is about noise emission. I did read that there is a certain factor involved in the vaulting. I want to know what the noise emission is for the support devices on the pole. The second question has to do with wind. I am a student of wind. I've been studying it for 20 years, and I'm very concerned. And with the protrusion of the antennas, I'm concerned how very strong, significant winds are going to affect that. Are they going to blow like a transformer blows? And then the third question I have is about a long-term plan. And I'm hoping that you have all come up with, what are we going to do five years from now? And is what you are presenting to us tonight part of that plan, or is it just a Band-Aid to get more service now, and then we're going to have to redo it again in the future? So I want to know if this is just a part of the process for the long term.
First of all, I am not here as a proponent for small cell, other than to explain it and evaluate. So I do not know what the long-term plan is for Verizon. I'm not trying to waffle on that, but I want to be straight about that. The antennas, I guess, let's go back and talk about, the antennas themselves are, for this design, are two-foot in height. They're roughly the same diameter as the pole, they'll be bolted on the top of the pole. I know of no instance, no instance, where any of these have ever come off a pole. That doesn't mean it does never happen, but I know of none. I do know that the power utility here, your local power utility, Pacific Gas is extremely difficult to deal with, and they, by difficult, I mean they're very stringent about requirements of getting on the pole. So I do not think that that is an issue. There's one other part, I may just get the wind.
That was the wind, the noise.
Oh, the noise, yeah. The radios that are being proposed have no noise right now.
I'm talking about the support.
Do you hear my microphone, please?
I am. I'm talking about the noise emission and the support devices. I know that.
There are the, right now, let me just start, the current design that the applicant has provided has the equipment mounted on the poles. All the equipment is passive relative to noise. There's no, there is no noise equipment, generated equipment there. If they were to be put into a vault, there would be cooling systems that would be necessary. I think that's the question. But as I understand, and I think I'm correct on, the radios, I'm pretty familiar with them, are quiet. There's no noise there. You know, there is transformer noise, but if you had it here, put it on the pole, but the answer is, there's no noise out of them.
I have a couple of questions. So the radiation, potential radiation, is that only emitted from the antenna, or?
It is only, in the ideal engineering world, the only radiation comes out of the antenna right. It's coaxial. The radio equipments themselves are sealed. They are sealed, and they do not leak. The cabling is a solid coaxial cable, that will not leak. And the only radiation comes out of the antenna. And if you go through the reports that we provided, the radiation is all out in the horizontal plane. The radiation down from the antenna is very, very low. It's about 40, 1/40 of the radiation.
So if there was a proposal to vault some of this equipment underground, from what I understand, the only equipment that could go underground was the radio remote units, and that, you're telling me, doesn't emit radiation?
That is correct.
Okay. Another question I had is, I think your last slide talked about how these units need to see each other, like have a sort of direct line of sight?
No, no, that is incorrect. They are connected, these three units are connected by fiber optic to a central control center. They do, they're each independent. So example, if one were to go out, it'd have no impact other than the area that it served. And in most cases, there's sufficient signal that would serve that area on an interim basis.
Okay, then what did that last slide, I thought, I thought it said something to the effect of the small cells need to be sort of close together.
The only, they only need to be close together for the fact that.
So they're not connected?
Because they have, just have small coverage areas, that's what.
So, because my question was going to be if they needed to be sort of pointed toward each other, looked toward each other, could, you know, could people or whatever really in between those, could there be an amplification of the radiation? And again, I'm not the expert here, but.
Obviously, they reinforce.
My question is basically like, if one unit is obviously within the, you know, the FCC guidelines, it wouldn't be amplified out by another one, sort of adding an order of magnitude?
Just to give you an idea, maybe.
If that makes any sense.
Cut in with, a typical unit, if you were to stand in front of the unit at the maximum beam, the FCC allotted field would go out roughly slightly short of 25 feet. Okay? So in other words, they would have to be within 50 feet of each other to really impact that.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's my question.
I had a question. It has more to do with long-range plans for undergrounding fiber optics. I guess the scenarios that you showed, fiber optics currently are above ground, they're on the utility poles, and that's how they're transmitted. In the future, let me step back. Are there any undergrounded fiber optics in Sonoma County?
I do not know locally. I can tell you, I do a lot, you know, I'm an East Coast guy, I can tell by the way I talk. The, in Montgomery County, Maryland, areas that I work in, around the DC area, most, all areas, new areas, all cabling's underground, and the fiber's underground. Typically, the fiber's put in conduit, and that's, that's just the way it's constructed.
So a good example of an undergrounding system is Highway 12. Caltrans utilities are underground, so any fiber optic cables or whatnot, at least through the city of Sonoma are underground. Is there underground fiber optic cables right now in the city of Sonoma?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But I will tell you that in most cities, most areas that I work in, that I, for example, I do the engineering for, our company does the engineering, the Delaware Department of Transportation, and most all of our fiber is underground. We put conduit in, we put new roads in, we repair roads, and we use, we basically put PVC pipes in there, and we pull the conduits, the cable, the fiber cable through. A typical fiber cable is about a half an inch, over a half an inch in diameter, may have 144, 288 fibers, which is infinity in our business.
And the last question has to do with the carriers themselves. We have an application before us, applications from Verizon, but there are other carriers. So I guess my question is, for example, one cell tower application, is that just used by that particular carrier? If AT&amp;T, or if another cell company were to come and receive a franchise, would they then have to have their own?
The trend in the industry is to have their own. It is technically feasible to add them together, and I know some of the vendors like Crown Castle are doing that, but by and large, I'm just telling you about the hundreds of applications we have reviewed, they're standalone applications. In other words, if AT&amp;T were to come in here, they'd be knocking on other poles, to be exact.
And how close, let me put it this way. Is there any parameters or limitations on to how close a one carrier could be next to another? Say, on the street, there could be 10 small cell sites, or 20, say? I mean, you know, depending on how many franchises are allotted by the government.
Well, tangent question on that. If, the same carrier probably wouldn't want to be any closer than 500 feet, maybe 1,000 foot apart. But specifically, if it's another carrier operated in a different frequency band, they could be on the next pole.
But do these cell, small cell towers operate on the same frequency?
They all operate on frequencies that the cable, this community, that the wireless company has licensed for. So example, AT&amp;T has different frequencies than Verizon has, and T-Mobile has other frequencies, and they vary from different parts of the country. But within any service area, they're defined, they're defined individual carriers. They do not share as a whole the same frequencies.
Okay, thank you. Carol?
Yes. My question is to you, as our new planning director, okay? And I'm kind of, I'm losing the big picture here. I need to know what the big picture is. What are we being asked to do tonight?
What are we being asked to do tonight? And what is going to happen, you know, at the end of this discussion? Since I don't think we're actually scheduled to take real action. Am I correct?
Yes. So tonight, again, David Stor, Planning and Community Services Director. We are before you tonight to seek direction, to entertain, enter into a discussion, receive feedback, receive public input, and direction from the commission with respect to three specific sites, which is not a part of these discussion right now. We'll be asking for direction for whether the commission can direct us with respect to some ordinance issues that we've raised in the staff report that's applicable to all three of the sites. And then, when we receive that direction, we can then formulate a staff recommendation for a subsequent meeting. We'll also be asking with respect to direction on findings that you have to make for use permits, and also with findings that we have with respect to Chapter 5.32, which I'll be talking about in a few moments.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm asking the question, too, is that you mentioned just a few moments ago that there would be certain things that you could present now or present them later. My personal preference, and I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I'd like to hear them now.
Well, I'd like to go ahead, and I think if we stick with the agenda that we have, we will be hearing Mr. Stor's presentation shortly. So I'd just as soon stick with the way we've structured it. And if information is not then shared, then please raise your question again.
Okay. The only reason why I'm asking is that I don't want to get drowned in minutia, okay? And things that none of us are really, I mean, I'm quite sure that there's more savvy people on this commission than myself about wireless telecommunication facilities. But the bottom line is that it's a lot of, you know, mumbo jumbo that most of us don't really have at our fingertips, you know, in terms of knowledge level. And so I kind of like to, you know, stay on the high road, at least for a while. That's my only concern.
I hear what you're saying. I can tell you that having reviewed the 622 pages, I, too, have been somewhat overwhelmed. But I think it is, in terms of what we're trying to accomplish this evening, I think the proposed agenda sequence makes sense, and I don't believe we'll be bogged down too much more in minutia.
Mr. Vice Chair, one option to go along with Mr. Jensen's comment is, we could have the commission conclude its questions with Mr. Affleck. I could then make my presentation with respect to the urgency ordinance that was adopted by the council on Monday. And then we can open the hearing to the public for their discussion on either the presentation or comments with respect to the urgency ordinance.
Yeah. I think that makes sense, to go ahead and go first with concluding any, I don't want to cut off any commissioners with any more questions to our consultant.
Please.
All right, please, James.
Thank you. Mr. Affleck, I have a few questions that are, I think, kind of local to our concerns here in Sonoma. So if they are, should be delayed till later to the applicant, let me know that, okay? You mentioned that these are connected by fiber optic cables. Does the location of the fiber optic cables have anything to do with the locations that have been selected for these? Or is it on the pole that they're going to?
I'll defer to the applicant on that. I didn't get into that level.
Okay.
The answer is, as a general rule of thumb, yes. But I don't know about your specific application.
Okay. My next question. In regard to the RF emission standards that the SEC has set, to what extent does our local, does our town have to evaluate the context of the collaborative RF emissions around a certain tower and so forth? In other words, is it very clear? Or is there a lot of obligation on the local jurisdiction to evaluate the context of where the tower is?
There is no obligation. What I mean by that is you have, in your code here, you have a requirement for someone to present, in the particular application, this is in general, this is pretty common in California, the applicants are usually required to have submitted an application or a study that was done independently by a registered engineer, that these are in compliance.
I understand.
And that has been provided here. And I, at your age, should have independently reviewed that and concur with what.
Okay, fine. I noted that they were, they were stated they were within compliance, but I didn't know exactly the extent of that. You made that very clear. I have a couple more, just two more short questions that may be specific to the installation. There are a number of issues to be considered about this as far as the way they're being And I think I understand the answer to this question already. But is it possible to put these on rooftops rather than have them on poles? And/or could they also be put in, say, small unusable parcels of land that are distributed around town where they could be occluded by shrubbery and trees and so forth? Are these locations extremely, finitely selected? They are obviously, and they are clearly in the public eye. That's why I ask.
Right, yeah. I guess, I'm trying to give you a waffling East Coast answer on this.
I'm from Washington, I understand that.
I'll work on it, yeah. I know where you're coming from. Generally speaking, there's a target area they want to hit. It's areas, for example, if you look at the applications you have here, they're in where there are businesses. They're in areas where the signal's not quite as strong, but there's a congregation. So that's their target area. Unfortunately, the coverage areas of these things are relatively small. If you went through our exciting report, you saw on the other, the coverage areas, somebody ordered 400, 500 feet from the site to have in-building penetration. So that limits them really to, you know, a range of several poles, if you think about how far poles are separate. The other issue they have to deal with, there's only a certain number of poles that you can go on to because of constraints on the pole itself, either power transformers, cutoff switches, and many other things. I'm trying to divert, your last question was related to, the industry as a whole is seeking to mount this equipment in the public right-of-way. And generally, in the public right-of-way, they have the choice of either installing their own structures or poles, or use existing structures or poles. The most common one is to use existing utility poles. Some communities, for example, encourage them to put in, on their own traffic signal poles, on their own light poles, to put in poles. There's many different variations that are out there. But the industry as a whole looks the poles that are tall enough, located the right direction, and are usable. Usable, I mean, that the pole doesn't have to be replaced. At most, it can be extended and such.
Okay. One last question. Because they're in the public right-of-way, does the city of Sonoma have any liability in terms of accidents and that sort of insurance issues because of that location?
I don't play lawyer.
Okay. I'll ask that later, then. That's fine. Thank you, sir.
I do have one question before we open it up to the public. Oh, to David, I'm sorry. The question is, based upon the evolution of this technology, we've gotten from big equipment to not-so-big equipment. Is it fair to say that as technology improves, that the hardware is going to continue to get smaller?
Well, what is happening, and particularly in certain areas, is that the hardware is getting smaller, not because of technology, but it's gotten smaller because we're using lower-power devices. But we're putting more devices out there. So what is typically happening is, and you can see it right now, you've got the macro sites, you've got these sites. Before we had, we called small cells that were on buildings, you know? If you get enough sites out there, the power can get almost down to nothing, if you think about it, theory. But, and obviously, then the equipment can be smaller, cooling's not as much of a problem and such. But that's an evolution. Think back to the first cell phone that you carried around with a wagon, you know? That kind of device, and how those have gotten smaller. The old cells, portable cells that we used to use, they had several watts of output, and they needed a corresponding, I prefer to talk like, they needed a corresponding power supply for it. The biggest limitation we have in the whole industry is the cell battery. Remember, that's, it's a two-way, and the laws of physics are, it takes a certain amount of energy to go one way as the other for a given speed. And so that's the limitation. But to answer your question specifically, there's no doubt the industry is going to smaller gadgets in the field, but at more locations.
Okay, very, thank you. So if I don't see anyone else wishing to raise any questions, then I'd like to turn it over to our director for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Again, David Stor. In 1996, when President Clinton signed into law the Telecommunications Act, the city of Sonoma was very forward-thinking at that time and established its own ordinance relative to telecommunication facilities. As a planning director in another life, along with many fellow planning directors, we were concerned about the proliferation of cell towers. But mostly, your ordinance, Chapter 5.30, does a very good job of regulating cellular communication facilities on private land. And so on Monday evening, in response to the industry that you've just heard about from Mr. Affleck, on Monday evening, the city council unanimously adopted an ordinance, an urgency ordinance, one that adds and supplements your existing 22-year-old ordinance regulating telecommunication facilities. And I'd like to just go through a few slides that show you a little bit about the presentation that I made. Again, this is a new chapter being added to your municipal code. There are several reasons why this new code needs to be put into place. The first, again, is there have been really no substantive changes to our regulations here in Sonoma. Again, Chapter 5.32. The second reason is basically they don't currently address the type of technology that we have here today before you. Probably the most important piece, I think, and I've highlighted and read there, is that there is going to be a new order effective January the 14th. It's already been put into place, but its effective date is next year, soon coming upon us, which really mandate to local agencies, such as the city of Sonoma, that we have to deal with several types of applications that could come in, especially those within the public right-of-way. And that there are shock clocks or timelines that we have to be able to process these types of applications. And I'll go into those in just a few minutes. The point being is, when an application comes in, Wendy's going to be really busy trying to get these off of her desk within 60 to 150 days. And I'm tongue-in-cheek here. The other thing, too, that I wanted to point out is that there's going to be several other providers coming before us as a city relative to this new technology. And in talking with Lee, he mentioned that we could be anywhere between 20 to 30 small cell towers within a mile, a square mile per provider. So that kind of gives you a sense of the scope of the technology. Later, I'll ask Lee to talk a little bit about the coverage of the macro towers relative to the coverage of the three sites that will be coming a little bit later on that we'll be talking about. So as I mentioned, there are actually four particular types of applications that will be coming our way. The small cells that we just talked about, these will be on telephone poles within the public right-of-way. It may be on existing poles, or it may be in the location where there are existing poles. And again, I'll point out that difference a little bit later on when we talk about the applications specifically. We also have two types of applications that are new pursuant to the order that we'll be talking about. The first being what I would call a California pole versus a federal pole. It's the only way I can distill it. But there's two separate sets of regulations, depending on the type of co-location facility or modification that's being proposed at a particular site. The key components of this new chapter that was added by the council is that there will be no residential zone, towers within residential zones or within the plaza retail overlay district. The second thing that we've put in there is there's a prohibition that pole-mounted facilities will be at least 1,500 feet apart. A use permit will still be required by the planning commission for these small cell facilities, so you'll be able to take a look at it, except for those that I talked about earlier, where there's a California preemption, I'm not sure if that's the right word or not, but also a federal preemption, where those two types of applications will be going through our office and will be issued administratively. In the case of a use permit, as with the three applications before you this evening, appeals will be made or can be made to the city council. We have placed a limit there with a maximum term for use permits for 10 years, with extensions permissible through the planning commission process. Conditions of approval will require FCC certification that also have the ability to have a performance bond. When I say FCC certification, it's making sure that we are, the proposals are compliant with the emissions data that Mr. Affleck spoke about. And as we've also heard tonight, there will be an indemnification process or agreement that'll be placed on each application when they do come before the planning commission. The use permit regulations that we currently have in our municipal code are still applicable. Those have not been changed one way or the other with respect to the new addition of Chapter 5.30. Just very quickly, without going into the details, we certainly can do this perhaps at the next meeting if there's a desire on the commission's part. The submittal applications checklist, if you will, has been beefed up in the ordinance that was adopted. 22 items for any applicant to address. We also have the ability to retain consultants at the applicant's expense. There are 16 general design guidelines, and there's also additional design guidelines for facilities that are located outside the public right-of-way and also inside the public right-of-way. You can see that we've got 16 conditions of approval for just telephone communication facilities, in addition to your other conditions that we can put on applications for use permits. That concludes my presentation at this point. And, Mr. Chair, I would suggest that you open up, you know, unless there's questions of myself or Mr. Abachi, we can address those now. And then, following your questions of staff, then it would be appropriate to turn the time over to the public for their comment.
Very good. So with that, do any of my fellow commissioners have questions? And we'll start with Commissioner Burnett.
Thank you, Chair Wellender. A few questions. One, you said guidelines, but your slide said standards, which, there's obviously been discussion recently about standards versus guidelines. I'm curious which they are.
Well, I'm not going to guess at this, I'm not going to guess at this moment, but it may even be applicable to the type of application that's brought in. I'll take a look at that and get back to you.
Okay. Also, I was under the impression use permits ran with the land, so how can we give, you know, issue a use permit that expires in 10 years?
Well, they would run with the land, but there can be a term on the use permit for 10 years. Under state law, cities are able to limit the period for permits on wireless facilities to 10 years.
So it's only applicable to a wireless facility?
It can be applicable to other types of facilities or structures, depending on the municipal code. But of course, if the property were to transfer in the midst of the 10 years, it would run with the land, and it would go to the transferee.
Okay. And then, can you speak a little more in detail about the permits that can be administratively What are those? The co-allocation?
Yeah. I guess I would summarize it as, under federal law, there are further constraints on local agencies to approve modifications. Modifications that are determined not to make a substantial change in an existing facility. And so those are the types of permits that are handled administratively.
So it would have to be approved first, to even get to that stage by the planning commission?
Yeah, the original facility would have to be approved.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of quick questions to the planning director. I had a brief conversation with you this afternoon. It's my understanding that the city of Sonoma has never issued a bond issue for underground wiring. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. That's my understanding, yes.
Are there any plans for the city to do any underground wiring?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of, okay. Are the particular, it's the particular proposal that is before us tonight, could that be installed in an underground vault as easily as put on top of a telephone pole?
I'm sorry, I would, I would just caution, if we could hold that question?
Sure, okay.
Until those applications?
Yes, that's fine.
I, I had a question about the urgency ordinance in terms of the spacing, the limitation of 1,500 feet between each cell tower. That would, would that allow for, like, use, co-use of a telephone pole? Like, you'd be able to have one telephone pole 1,500 feet from another one, but have multiple carriers on one pole?
Yeah, I believe the intent is to encourage co-location as much as possible.
Okay. And the other question, I don't know if this is getting into the applications, but the proposals that are before us right now, if you can give us an idea, are those approximately 1,500 feet apart? And would they right now comply with the urgency ordinance?
So we'll defer that question until my next presentation, but that will be addressed, and you'll be able to participate in that, in that discussion.
I'm going to go back to the long-term situation, because I'm a little concerned. I, I don't want to see all these telephone poles with this equipment every 1,500 feet all over the town. What are we doing in the long-term to consolidate? I, I know you just said that we're going to try to have cohabitation, but is there a really long-term plan?
The, the answer is no and yes, as opposed to yes and no. The no part is our current regulations do not allow for us to do any kind of master planning for facilities, but part of the submittal process, part of the yes part answer of the answer, is that when use permits do come to you with respect to the urgency ordinance 5.30, we can require a master plan of the services of that particular vendor, and we can meld the two together. You'll get that information as part of the application package. Let's say it's applicant A, they'll give us a master plan for their facilities, and we'll be the ones that has to kind of meld it with applicant B, C, or D.
I have one more question. If, you said earlier that each carrier would have 24 to 29 or so antenna per square mile. Sonoma's two square miles, so that's, you know, 48 to 58, and then AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, Sprint, I mean, that could be like 200, 250 antennas. So if we are encouraging co-location, I, I see a situation where you would have one pole with, you know, four, five carriers on there, so, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Affleckbach, but is, you know, the, the emission, the radiation, all that, is that taken into account?
Well, that's-
You know, we're looking at one small cell, but when you have five in one location?
Try multiplying by five.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's basically each of them is an independent unit, even if they share the same antenna, the same feline, the same location, the total summation of the radiation would be n times it, yes.
I had kind of a more mundane question about the actual performance bond that the urgency ordinance requires. Could you explain to me the, the mechanism for the performance bond and what it's for? Is it in cases where equipment is abandoned and we're required to remove it? And also, by requiring a performance bond, does that infer that if it needs to be maintained, that the city would have to maintain it if the carrier decides not to? So I'm just wondering about the performance bond, and is this a cash, an assurity bond, or is it just a performance bond that if they don't perform, that the city can go after that carrier? And if the carrier sells his interest to another carrier, I'm just curious how effective this mechanism could be.
The, the first part of the answer is yes, it would be a performance bond for the abandonment of the structures and facilities on structures and the like, if for some reason that service is not maintained, that yes, that, that would be the person for the money. I'm not sure how the city of Sonoma has done this in the past with respect to performance bonds. I could defer to Public Works and get that answer back to you, because they're the ones that will be the one that it'll be made out to, they'd be the ones that probably be performing the work of removal of the equipment, that kind of a thing. John, do you have anything else to add to that?
Yes, for, for maintenance, removal, abandonment, for all of those reasons, there would be a performance bond. I believe it, it would be an assurity bond. I think your question was, would it be a cash deposit? No, it would be an actual assurity bond, so there would be an actual party that would be responsible, not just the, not just the applicant.
And it would be the person that owns and maintains the, the system, not necessarily the first person that submits it. It transfers to the next carrier, to the next carrier, whoever buys the, the service or-
Yeah, I believe it.
Verizon might be bought, for example, by another company who might transfer it to it. I'm just trying to understand 10 years down the road, how effective these, these performance bonds will be, so.
Well, it, it's a little bit, I guess I would say that it, it would be a condition of approval. So it would be a condition that would always be on the use permit, so there would always need to be a performance bond in place while the use permit is in effect.
If I can just add, too, the, the beauty of a use permit is that we can always have an exercise of discretion to revoke a use permit as well. So for example, if there's a problem with the operation of the facility, there is a process available to the city.
Okay, that, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, then, at this time, I would like to indeed open it up to the public. I would like to request that as you approach the dais, that you indeed identify your name and address. We will be respecting the three-minute allotment of time, and, and also, we haven't presented any of the specific applications, so this would be the opportunity to really make comment about the discussions we've had up until this point. There will be another opportunity when the actual applicants, applicants will be evaluated, that you'll be able to come up again if so desired. So with it said-
Thank you, sir. Ken Brown, 1396 Lubec Street in the city of Sonoma. The speaker got me at, right at the beginning, when he said, "Don't trust technology." We saw that clearly here tonight. Also, I don't have a lot of trust in decisions and organizations that emanate from Washington, DC. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Again, my name is Mary McDevitt. I'm a retired physician. I live here in Sonoma on Montini Way. And I, my main concern is the radiation from these devices. I think we all know there are some radiations from our cell phones. Some people don't hold it by their head, they're afraid of cancer, they have, you know, different devices so that they can keep it away. And I think the important thing is this 5G issue, which I was concerned it wasn't even on the agenda, but we heard that the 5G is going to be necessary because the, the bandwidth has been utilized, and they have to find another way to communicate with all our devices. And I think you heard that it's going to be a different high-frequency band that will be used, and the radiation coming off of that is different. And also, the technology is different because you cannot have a 5G antenna talk to another one with a distance of 1,500 feet. These slow waves only go a certain distance, they don't go through buildings, so when we get to 5G, the radiation exposure for everybody is going to be significantly increased. And what I have heard is that the companies hope to have the 5G implementation done by 2026 across the United States. And some of the lobbyists in Washington have been trying to pass legislation so that the companies can go from 4G to 5G without getting input from communities. And Governor Brown has said no, he recognizes the difference and said, "If you're going to 5G, you have to provide community input." And so that's what I thought we were doing tonight. I think the thing that I'd like to just quote for you, I mean, whether or not you believe in radiation from these devices, your cell phone, your laptop, your modems, everything, there is radiation given off by that. And what I'd like to do, and I'll leave you a copy of this, I'd like to read just the opening paragraph from this report. This is titled, "Scientists Warn of Potential Serious Health Effects of 5G." "We, the undersigned, more than 180 scientists and doctors from 35 countries, recommend a moratorium on the rollout of the fifth-generation 5G for telecommunications until potential hazards for human health and the environment have been fully investigated by scientists independent from the industry. 5G will substantially increase exposure to radio frequency electromagnetic fields on top of the 2G, 3G, 4G, Wi-Fi, et cetera, for telecommunications already in place. These electromagnetic fields have been proven to be harmful for humans and the environment." And this is, a lot of the work is being done by the European Union rather than here in the United States, but one of the signatures to this is Professor Joel Moskowitz, who is the Director of the Center for Family and Community Health, the School of Public Health at the University of California here in Berkeley. And I believe he has a blog that you can participate in, and he'll tell you about the dangers of the 5G. So I think the-
Can you, I'm sorry, wrap that up with-
Yes, I think the thing to remember that going from 4G to 5G is like going from a typewriter to a computer. It is not just, you know, another issue of the same technology. This technology will give a lot of radiation, and if they have it completely in our area, you would have to have an antenna every five or eight houses, because the waves to communicate will not go through buildings and will not go as far as the 4G technology will do them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. McDevitt.
Lynn Marie Vincent, 65, Guadalajara Drive. I'm the Community Outreach Coordinator for the Sonoma Neighborhood Association, and we have a presentation in a sequence of speakers, and with the chair's permission, we'd like to proceed in that sequence at our three-minute limit.
Respecting the three minutes, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you so much. First of all, I want to thank all of you commissioners and the city staff, and Mr. Affleckbach, for the hard work that you are doing in service to our community. Sonoma is a beautiful city, and that is partly due to all of us who are here who volunteer. Did you know there are 250 nonprofits in Sonoma Valley? And the planning commission is one of the most important volunteer bodies of civil servants. You influence the future of Sonoma with every decision, including the one you'll make tonight. We are here to ask you to deny the permits for these cell towers. So I don't know when it started that a business would come into our city and threaten us if we don't buy their product. We limit big-box stores, we recommend colors for signs, we don't allow couches in the plaza at the city party, but Verizon insists that we must accept these close proximity microwave radiating antenna cell tower applications. Thank goodness for the tolling agreement that the city attorney and staff were able to negotiate so that we can have this public review process. These cell towers do not have to be installed because they are unnecessary. The FCC regulations of 1996 stomp all over our local authority, but there are avenues to stop these cell tower applications, and one of them is that the carrier must prove there is a significant gap in coverage. And I'm here to tell you, there is no significant gap in coverage in Sonoma. We have done tests at all 10 locations. These results have already been submitted to the public record, and this is substantial evidence that there is no significant gap in coverage in Sonoma. The three being reviewed tonight, which according to the zoning map are actually in mixed use, these tests for these three locations show there is great coverage. That's right, Sonoma does not need these 5G cell towers. I also have a new packet that I would like to submit to the public record. These are 54 surveys filled out by individuals all opposing the 5G cell towers.
At this, at this point, Mr. Chair, I think it's important that the comments regarding the applications specifically be held until the application items are up.
I, I would concur with his recommendation, so not only these comments, but hence further comments be, again, not focused specifically on these individual applications.
Okay, sorry about that, thank you.
And one other comment, if I can make, before you please step forward, and that is, I, I know that clapping is one way to express unity and approval, but I'd like you to limit it to just simply raising your hand if you want to support the individual that just spoke.
First Amendment rights are to also clap if we wish.
Okay.
That was an inappropriate comment, and with the request that we be civil, I would refrain from continuing with such interruptions until you have the chance to speak. Is that clear? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Catano. I live at 29 Fifth Street West in Sonoma, right across the street from a proposed, one of the 10 proposed towers. As we know, Verizon has requested permission to install these 5G cell towers, and some as close as 30 feet from a home, but I know we're not talking about those tonight, but in the, in the larger sense. So seven in residential neighborhoods as close as 30 feet from homes, and three in commercial areas or mixed-use areas. In addition to being ISOs, these cell towers emit radiation, which is harmful to us and our pets, and especially to the very young and the elderly. And remember, too, this radiation extends to visitors and tourists as well. So some of the peer-reviewed scientific studies that have shown these adverse health effects include increased cancer rates, hormonal suppression, depression, reduced fertility. The negative impact on our health and the knowledge that property values will decrease should be reason enough to stop the towers. My neighbor lost the sale of his house when the buyer learned about this proposed cell tower, and even though he has since lowered his price, he can't sell the house. We should not be put in the position of losing 20 to 25% of the value of our homes in order to allow Verizon or other carriers to put these towers in our neighborhoods. So on behalf of all of us, no cell towers in commercial or residential areas in Sonoma, and as hundreds of concerned Sonoma citizens, I don't know where the, oh, there it is, "We, the undersigned, oppose the installation of 5G close proximity microwave radiating cell towers anywhere in Sonoma." I hope that's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'd like to enter these into the public record, so I don't know where to put them.
My name is Paul McGavin. I'm an expert in measuring and mitigating radiation, and I'm telling you, I'm talking tonight not about matters-
Excuse me.
Uh, Petaluma, California. I'm not talking tonight about matters of worry, risk, or concern. I'm talking about substantial evidence of harm and substantial legal references. I will now read a letter that I sent to all the FCC commissioners on September 25th, 2018, the day before they voted through FCC 1779, the Wireless Infrastructure Order. I'm standing here with my daughter, Kira, she and I both wrote this letter together. I'm asking you today, dear FCC commissioners, I'm asking you today to consider your family and their future lives, and the lives of all Americans, when you recognize that in 2018, the safety, privacy, and property value hazards created by a peak RF microwave radiation measurement at ground level at 300 feet from a 4G macro tower in Sebastopol, California, is less than a measurement- is less than a measurement 100 feet from a so-called small cell wireless telecommunications facility in Santa Rosa. This small cell, which I've measured and posted on my website, uses the same 24-inch amphenol antenna that you are considering later in these applications. At a second or third-story bedroom window, the RF microwave radiation exposures are about 10 times higher. This has been documented. That means the measurement of 100,000 microwatts per square meter climbs to 1 million microwatts per square meter at the second or third-story bedroom window, which is hazardous. This is exactly why you don't want to entertain antennas close to where people live, sleep, and heal. They should be 150 feet in the air or higher. The next speaker will show you exactly how Verizon recommends to do that. So you must fully consider the consequences. The consequences are deaths and illnesses reported from this apartment building in less than nine years' exposure, and the property value casualties caused by small cells that force residents to be exposed to 24/7 pulsed data-modulated radio frequency microwave radiation. That's at scientistsforwiredtech.com/Sebastopol. To prevent these deaths and illnesses, the FCC could instead allow local communities to integrate broadband technology as they see fit, which in many cases would be fiber-optic to homes. Broadband technology, for which Americans already paid but never received. Verizon got dinged $300 million in New York for failing to output the fiber-optic broadband that the people paid for. They got caught. And they would get caught in every other state when you do these investigations. You should go and say, and look at that money that they stole and gave to their wireless companies. Wireless video transmission is absolutely the most energy inefficient and hazardous choice. Wired video transmission by fiber optic cable is far superior, faster, more secure, more reliable, more energy efficient. It's pulsed by light, and it has no consumer hazards from radio frequency microwave radiation exposures. The levels that cause these deaths are fractions of what's allowed by our guideline, fractions. You must consider this. You must set your own maximum power output levels. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Wallett, and I own Yoga Community located at 577 Fifth Street West, very close or in between a couple of the towers that we're talking about. This came to my attention via several sources that were letting us know that these towers would be going up, and so I started to look more into them. And what I found was, they don't need to put them where they're putting them. They can actually put them much higher in the air, they can put them on macro towers, and they're choosing not to, they're putting them down lower. So what we need to look at is the other options that are available that are more expensive for this company to do that put us at less risk. And so that's why I ask you to deny these permits today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alex Leader. I live on Verano Avenue, been a resident of the, of Sonoma for 20 years. I'm also a business owner here. And I'm standing here to speak against the applications because, again, this is a, this is a case of corporate profits being put before public safety and public health. We have had wireless communication for a very long time, but that, that technology keeps changing, it keeps evolving, and the, the studies aren't really there to show exactly what's going to happen. We're, we're being put in harm's way so that they can make more money. And I'm a customer of Verizon, by the way, so I'm not opposed to the, the business of telecommunications. But again, I, I think that as a, as a planning commission here in our city, you should really seriously consider this application to add these cell towers in our town. It's, it's, it's putting us at risk, and I would urge you to, to consider that when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Valerie Wolf. My address is 389 Franklin Street in Napa, and I'm here to support all of the residences of Sonoma who are also trying to fight having these cell towers installed in their city. From 1953 to 1978, the Russians used RF microwave radiation to covertly attack the U.S. Embassy staff in Moscow, Russia. The ongoing irradiation campaign affected about 1,800 employees and 3,000 dependents housed at the embassy during this period. The Russians targeted the U.S. Embassy with RF microwave weapons from 2,400 to 4,100 megahertz at levels of 50,000 microwatts per square meter, less than 1/3 of the 100,000, 170,000 microwatts per square meter that scientists for wired technology measured at 100 feet from a so-called small cell with a 24-inch high-amphonal antenna in Santa Rosa, California on Piner Road, just like the ones you're considering tonight. The very same adverse health outcomes inflicted on U.S. Embassy personnel, cardiac problems, neurological damages, altered blood cell counts, increased chromosome aberrations, elevated cancer in children and adults, and illnesses increasing in dose-response manner with cumulative time of exposure are being caused today by the use and exposure to ubiquitous wireless mobile devices and infrastructure. Dr. Neil Cherry reported in 2000, "The Soviets irradiated the U.S. Embassy in Moscow between 1953 and 1978. The dominant resulting cancers for embassy personnel were brain tumor and leukemia, reproductive organ cancer. The study confirms that extremely low-level chronic microwave exposure is associated with very significant increases in illnesses and mortality in organs across the whole body consistent with widespread cellular chromosome damage. Significantly elevated chromosome aberrations were measured, as well as significant alterations in white and red blood cell counts," Jacobson, 1969, "which would also be the expected result from reduced melatonin. A highly remarkable result is the dose-response relationship for a range of sicknesses. Despite the small numbers, the lack of long latency periods and dilutionary factors, the data shows significant increases. Cardiac problems, neurological and psychological symptoms, altered blood cell counts, increased chromosome aberrations, and elevated cancer in children and adults, sickness increasing in dose-response manner with years of residence. In 1964, the U.S. Government started paying its embassy personnel stationed in Moscow hazard pay in recognition of the statistically higher incidences in cancer and other illnesses for those living and working at the embassy. In 1978, the U.S. abandoned the embassy building." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Hi, my name's Sharon Param, and I live at 3110 Encanto Drive in Napa, California. I'm also here supporting the community of Sonoma in their opposition to these towers. As far as aesthetics, the so-called small cell towers are still bulky and unsightly. If approved, the charm and character of this community will be forever lost. Property values, we previously entered evidence into the public record that cell antennas located near homes reduce property values from 10 to 20%. This is supported by many real estate surveys and by local realtors right here in Sonoma. The California Constitution states that all people have inalienable rights, including protecting property. ADA compliance, allowing antennas, excuse me, ADA compliance, allowing antennas in neighborhoods violates the Americans with Disabilities Act. Affecting the electromagnetically sensitive EMS residents of Sonoma, CBR and Verizon are required to comply with the ADA, and yet these cell sites create an access barrier for EMS-disabled residents to their homes and communities. A California state survey conducted in 1998 revealed that 1.1 million Californians were very sensitive to electromagnetic radiation. That number is nearly 4 million today, and some live right here in Sonoma. If Sonoma allows this antennas, these antennas within 2,500 feet of an EMS person's home, they will not be complying with the ADA. If the Planning Commission members approve these cell tower applications knowing about ADA noncompliance, they would be complicit in this violation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Martholler. I live at 146 East Spain, and I built this mock-up of a cell tower, and it is to size, to spec, for the specs provided by Verizon. And this is a picture of a cell tower in Santa Rosa. It has a little bit less equipment, and I was told a bit earlier, and I've learned another, you know, info, that this is not quite accurate in some respects. They'll take stuff off, and it reduces the size. It's still opinion very ugly, and it does discourage people from wanting to live next to them because of health hazards. So, but anyway, they can, one year later, they can come back and add more stuff to this facility, and the FCC allows it. So whatever compromises have come into play today can all be changed, okay? The power can be upped, and the machinery can be increased. So what I want to talk about is liability. It appears that Verizon does have a problem with liability. Brief recap, Bill 649 made its way through the California Legislature in 2016. Governor Brown vetoed that because the state of California is going to pay for all the problems. Largest insurance companies in the world, Lloyds of London, Swiss RE, among them, won't touch it. It's too risky, and that's a problem for Verizon. It turns out that these small cell, these cell tower facilities cannot be insured because they are so hazardous, which means that Verizon has to find a way around the liability trap by having cities like us grant them access to our own poles, or by having facilities placed on PG&E poles. If cell towers are on our, our poles, then we have the largest burden of liability, and if on PG&E poles, we still are not free of this liability. They have unsafe technology, and they don't want to take responsibility for it by having anyone but themselves. They don't want themselves to pay for it. They want anybody, they want anyone but themselves to pay for it, excuse me. They want all the benefits but no responsibility. That's a smart business plan, but not for us. It is insulting that they think they can come into Sonoma and have us pay for their problem, for us to be their insurance plan. What's our cut in this deal from this 160-plus billion-dollar wireless industry? Our cut is to take care of their liability. Our benefit in this deal is that residents suffer from negative health hazards of this unsafe technology, and our neighborhoods, commercial, and mixed-use zones become a toxic waste disposal area for this radiation as our home values decrease. Do we get in burst for our low market value? Are there studies that show positive property values and health? I haven't found any. You have a really important decision to make, and thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I am the Canary. I have a diagnosis for electromagnetic sensitivity. It's E-- oh, my name's Shelley Masters, and I live at 336 Bantaro Street in Sonoma.
Thank you.
Sorry, okay, thank you. I have a diagnosis for electromagnetic sensitivity. It's EMS, which is a disabling characteristic that has been recognized by the Federal Access Board since 2002. Under the 1990 Americans with Disabilities Act, which predates the 1996 Telecommunications Act by six years, I am part of a protected disabled class and have specific rights, which I am asserting this evening under protections the U.S. Congress directs the ADA to guarantee. I have been a Sonoma homeowner since 2009 and have run a successful business from my home, meeting payroll, paying property taxes, and contributing to my community. I have been working professionally in the Bay Area for 34 years. I first developed electromagnetic sensitivity and received a medical diagnosis in 2010 when a wireless transmitter was attached to my home without my consent by PG&E. I am now unable to live and work anywhere near wireless transmitters, such as these close proximity microwave radiation antennas that you're considering approving. These antennas are too close to my home and other locations where I live and work. And these are the three that you're, you're talking about. If Verizon were to turn them on at the current power levels specified in the plans, it would create an access barrier to my home and to the community in which I live. I shop at Sonoma Market, my taxes are prepared by tax expertise on second, my hairstylist works at 554 First Street, and I meet friends at Hopmunk Tavern. These antennas, 006, 007, 0012, are as close as 25 to 250 feet from these locations, which are integral to my living in Sonoma. The city of Sonoma must reasonably accommodate my EMS. You can consider a variety of achievable accommodations, including moving the antennas to different locations that are less intrusive to my disabled rights. You could also regulate the power output from the antennas so the RF radiation does not exceed certain accommodating ranges. Tonight, I ask you to open a dialogue for modification of your policy proposal, as is required by law, and provide evidence that the plans you propose are capable of complying with my accommodation protections under the ADA. My electromagnetic sensitivity, EMS, condition is an impairment that substantially limits one or more of my major life activities. I have a record of such impairment, and I am regarded as having such an impairment, which limits one or more major life activities in a substantial way. Thank you for your time and attention this evening, and for acting to accommodate my EMS as you're required to do by the American Disability Act. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Rosemary Padrenzini, 437 Second Street West. We've lived in our home for 59 years. I moved to Sonoma when I was 10 years old. I really don't think we need these towers. It said in the Sonoma paper for commercial, okay, 453 where this tower is going to go is a bookkeeping in the house, but in the back is town, two-story townhouse with four families. The next up toward--
I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't want to be rude to interrupt, but if your comments are specific to one of the sites, that is going to be discussed, you know, next. And so in order to kind of keep the agenda flowing in the proper direction, if you could comment on just the general idea of these cell towers and what has been presented up until this point--
Well, I don't--
Otherwise, you can come back when--
Yeah.
Cell Tower 06, or 07, or 12 comes up.
Okay, I'm going to stop right now because you don't know me. I used to go to the Planning Commission, and my husb-- I mean, the city council, my husband broke his hip. I haven't been to a meeting. Now, wait a minute, don't stop me, I'm on a roll. I mean it.
Keep going.
Yeah, senior moment now, you got me upset.
It was not intended, ma'am.
Okay, you're going to keep, you know, this is going to postpone, just like the marijuana and the wine tasting. Thank you for nothing.
Hi, this is a different type of presentation that I have. My name is Taras Lumiere. I lived in Sonoma six years, but I work in Sacramento three days a week with a medical group.
Okay.
A very unusual medical group, and, because we handle problems that other medical doctors can't find. The problem with electromagnetic sensitivities, it doesn't show up in the blood very often. I work with four physicians and physical, four medical practitioners, but I myself am an acupuncturist. So I study the electrical system of the body. And I, along with thousands of other acupuncturists, am learning how to measure the pulse and the sensation at different acupuncture points because the body has an electrical system. Backing up a little bit, I want to say that I have patients who are, come to me and want help to get off of medications and the side effects from the medications. Many times, things that I'd have to deal with are the fact that, that they're using the computers, their cell phones, they have smart meters in the home. I had one patient come into the office a number of times in a hazmat suit because of our wireless computer system. And after a while, she said, "I just can't see you here because it's too stressful for me." So I would have to do house calls to her. So this is, this is very real to me, and I myself, as-- And I moved to Sonoma because I wanted to slow down, and I'm asking you all to please, in your hearts, realize, we don't have to rush through this so fast. There are scientific studies, and again, most of them are coming out of Europe because of the support that they get there that's not happening here, and that's a long story why that is so. So my, my suggestion is that you deny these applications now for health reasons, and know that the studies are present, read about them, find those websites that are already online that explain the confusion of the situation. And also, probably in the next five to 10 years, that 20 or 30% of the population that is very sensitive to electromagnetic fields, just like the 20 to 30% of children who should have a modified vaccine schedule, that's all going to be mapped out when we all have our genetic testing done. So do 23andMe, do the ancestry.com, send that information to those health sites that can help interpret your genetic makeup, and do you have methylation disorders? Do you have a tendency towards certain kinds of cancers or heart disease? And you'll, it'll get personal to you. And you'll realize, oh, yeah, that's why my cousin or why my daughter is on antidepressants. That's why my husband had a heart attack and nobody expected it.
Let me wrap it up, please.
You get the idea here. So it is personal. So look at your own health and your family and make the right choice. Read up about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I came, hi, my name is Donna McLaughlin. I live at 110 Merida Drive in Sonoma. I've been here almost 20 years. And I wasn't, I was planning just to come and listen to get an idea of what was going on, and I couldn't help but figure out that, well, we're talking about bandwidth versus broadband, and I was glad one gentleman talked about broadband. And I think it's very short-sighted to go to bandwidth. I look at the college, I know a lot of college students, they don't even use their cell phones. They text all the time, and they can always find Wi-Fi so they can text. And so I think, why are we investing in band, more bandwidth? And then I thought that it's mainly about these cars, self-driving cars, and I thought, well, why, you know, if that's the reason, there's got to be another technology. I don't know why Verizon wants to do all this. And, and I think about like South Korea, that has the highest number of broadband in the world. And I see them as, you can go anywhere in Korea and get on, on the Wi-Fi. You don't need a phone, and you can use, you know, Facebook or whatever to make a phone call. So I, I just think that we're going down the wrong way for the young people. And there's not many, I don't see any young people here to speak about this. And so I just think the cell phones are going to become obsolete. Why put energy there? Okay.
My name is John Duffy. I live at 853 Fifth Street East. I also live at 830 Virginia Court. I've lived in Sonoma for over 60 years. I also am a landlord and a property owner at 572, 564, and 554 First Street West. There is a cell site going in within 50 feet of my tenants and myself, beautysalons and lawyers, and the health aspects of this technology are being suppressed, and I'm alarmed by it, you know? There's not much I can do except to speak out, say, hey, this is dangerous, what you're doing, if you go through with this, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Tom Conlon, 18850 Robinson Road. I came tonight just to listen and learn, and I've come, come with a few takeaways from what we've heard so far. This is supposed to be a planning commission, but your director tonight seems to indicate that we have no plan in place for how our city will accommodate the infrastructure needed to serve our broadband needs, and that troubles me a lot. I, I think instead, we seem to be very applicant-driven in our, in our decision-making in this area. So the idea that we might have to accommodate three, or four, or five of these devices on, co-located on poles in the public right-of-way, all competing with one another from providers that are competing with one another, just makes no sense whatsoever to me. And so we don't let competing electricity providers put up their own poles throughout our community? That idea was, was squashed over 100 years ago. So the idea that we would support wireless infrastructure in a similar way just seems very foreign to me tonight. So I would urge you to embrace your responsibility as a planning commission and put in place some plans for how we're going to accommodate our broadband needs in the future. I, I don't know about the details of all of this, but it seems ridiculous to respond to these applications from individual competing providers on an ad hoc basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Robbie Leeds. I live at 17590 Highlands in Fetter Springs. In England, they drive on the left side of the road. On my street, we drive on what's left of the road. I have a telephone pole outside my house, and more and more stuff gets hung on it. A year and a half ago, a lamp got stuck on it, a street lamp. It shines right in my bedroom. I asked them to put a shade on it. Hasn't happened yet. 15 years ago, the county said they were going to repave my street. 10 years ago, they came and painted white lines where the speed bump should go. Nothing's happened. In the winter, the culverts under the road shoot up like artesian wells. Obviously, this all needs some attention. I suggest that all these wires go underground, the roads get repaired, the cell towers go up 1,000 feet where the big houses are up the hill. And as you testified, the radiation is much less if you're below it than if you're at the same level. This all makes perfect sense to me. I hope you can, I hope you can employ this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wendy Hayes. I'm at 178 Church Street. I'm here representing my whole family. I have a pole in my front yard. I am about three houses from one of the proposed sites. But the one thing that struck me about this is, have we not learned any lessons from last year? We're talking about putting more infrastructure above ground. The technology is there in many cases to, as we've heard, put some of this stuff underground where it's going to be less at risk to fire, less at risk for liability, safety, and potentially, we're hearing, maybe even some health risks. I would urge the planning commission, as you consider plans for how we're going to move forward into the rest of the 21st century, ways to do this safely, ways that are forward-thinking and not reactive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Diane Lumiere. I'm, live at 113 Merida Drive in Sonoma. I'm going to date us back a little bit because sometimes technology does not support biology or ecology. And we've had these lessons throughout the history of the United States. Do you remember the film The Graduate, when the guy was in the pool and he said, "What's the future?", and it was plastics? With those plastics, we got Styrofoam, BPA, single-use bags and bottles. We're now dealing with those issues every day. When chemicals came in for fertilizers that were magical to increase crop production, we got destroyed oceans, landfills, reactions in animals that can't reproduce any longer because that technology was fabulous while we first heard of it. I personally suffered from the beginning of X-rays in the dental field. My dad was a superb dental salesman, and in the mid-'50s, the new thing was X-rays. And since he was a great salesman, he would take his daughter around, and I was the guinea pig for the new X-ray machines that all the dentists used at the time. At that point, there were no lead coverings on chests or throats. And by the time I was 16, I had huge goiters and lost the use of my thyroid. And 30 years later, I lost all of my molars and had bone disease. So again, technology can be fabulous, but we need to pause and say, what does it do to the human race, to our environment, our planet? And we need to study this deeply before you introduce, I was so stunned tonight when I heard this, I was, I almost, I had no idea that that many poles were planned and multi-use, excuse me, on poles was planned. The increase of that radiation is so substantial that I can't even believe we're sitting here calmly and talking about this. So I urge us all to pause, consider what the last speaker said about broadband versus, you know, fiber optics versus pole after pole after pole. We're going to start looking like the oil feeds, the oil fields down in LA. Remember when those came up and what that did to the environment? That's what we're looking at here. So please, I caution you. Plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charlene Farrell, and I live at 590 Eldorado Drive in Sonoma. I've lived in the same house for 37 years. I just want to piggyback on what the last speaker said about the precautionary principle. I think this is something that sometimes gets lost in these discussions when financial concerns are, are in play, and that is that we don't know what the medical, well, we do know a lot of stuff, but even if you don't know, or we don't all know collectively all the effects of RF radio frequency radiation, we do know that there's enough data out there that we need to do more. And I'm here largely, I just want to put this on the public record, that my grandchildren live on 540 Studley Street, which is just a few feet from Fifth Street West at the Safeway parking lot, and they are two, and, I mean, excuse me, four and six. And I would just feel so, so much grief if, if something happened to them, and I imagine everyone here would feel that same thing if it was your children or your grandchildren, whether you worked for Verizon or whoever. And I know that you all are trying to make a living, and you're trying to support yourselves. But, you know, if, if you have to, if you have, if you suffer death, your spouse, yours, or, or yourself, it would be a whole other story. And so our challenge-
Ma'am, it's best to address us first, I mean, to address the commission when you speak. They will hear what you say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm speaking as a person, a human being-
Sure.
-to other human beings, and you all are human beings like we all are. And I just hope that your vision can be enlarged so that you can meet your financial needs and be secure and be abundant, and also be healthy, and the same for everyone in your family, like my grandchildren, Sean and Leila Decker, ages six and almost four.
If I do not see anyone else coming forward, then I will close this portion of the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners to give them an opportunity to comment or raise additional questions to staff.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I can, there are actually two things that I'd like to make as a consequence of the, what you've heard. I do want to distinguish the difference between the applicability of the new ordinance to new applications versus those that we currently have. With respect to the new ordinance, the new ordinance would not apply to the three cell towers that we'll be discussing later on this evening. The current ordinance, 5.32, will be the applicable ordinance that we have to review these. The second piece, I've just had a mental breakdown as far as trying to figure out my second point, but that will come to me in a few minutes. So I apologize for that, and as soon as I remember what it is, I'll mention it.
So just to follow up, that means that since Verizon's applications were in, they don't have to abide by the 1,500 square foot?
That is correct, yes.
But future applications from Verizon or from any other company would?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments at this point?
Mr. Chair, I just remembered, I'm sorry, excuse me, is with respect to the master-planning nature of what the comment that you heard this evening about taking a pause. We're not able to take a pause because of the pendency of the three applications that we have. As you see in your staff report, we did mention that we're currently have an agreement with Verizon to process these three particular applications that you'll hear more about later on this evening. So we can't really hit the pause button, do an analysis. We need to take action between now and the spring of next year. Sorry about the delay in the response.
No problem. Mr. McDonald?
Oh, my question has to do with something brought up by one of the comments with respect to ownership of the street poles and liability over the city. The poles that are throughout Sonoma, are they owned by the city, are they owned by PG&E, they owned by a pole authority?
The pole authority, I think, for the most part. All of the utility poles, my understanding is, all of the utility poles in the city are not owned by the city. I believe most of them or all of them are owned by the joint pole authority.
Okay, so the city has absolutely no liability whatsoever in terms of any action that we take is purely, you know, is, is-
It's tantamount to any other use permit that the planning commission would make a determination on for private property, tantamount to a building permit, and there is permit immunity under state law for cities in issuing permits.
Okay. And then just to follow up on that, in the city of Sonoma, we have multiple jurisdictions of public right-of-way. We have roads that are actually under the authority of Sonoma County that are not the city. We have Caltrans right-of-way, which is the state. So regardless of who has ownership or responsibility for the road, discretionary review for any future applications would come before us, not the state or not the county?
That's correct. Discretionary review comes before the city.
Okay, regardless of who is the underlying responsible agency for the road?
I believe that's so because the city has jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
Pardon me, I just have one quick question. It's related to, there was a lot of testimony here this evening about the health-related aspects of this equipment. If the equipment is, say, underground versus on a pole, is there any difference in the health-related aspects of the, of this system?
Get my button here turned on. The answer, I, I would say as an electrical engineer, no. What I mean by that is all the radiation that we're talking about, the electromagnetic radiation, comes out of the antenna. The antenna is going to be mounted up on the pole at some elevation, 20-foot or more, and all the equipment, whether it be on the pole, the electronic equipment, on the pole or underground, is, does not radiate.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add to Lee's comment, one of the conditions of approval that will be applicable with respect to the new ordinance, and certainly something that we can add to conditions of approval for any project that becomes, comes before the commission, is that we can require- commission, is that we can require studies for RF emissions in and around any given site as we can with noise for perhaps the sump pumps or cooling fans for noise if things are put in vaults.
I, but...
So just to be clear, we're going to, the application is already before us, we're using the existing ordinance, and we're going to determine issues and directions, whether to put them on, the support equipment on the pole or in a vault. Is that clear?
Yes, you currently have an ordinance, Chapter 5.32, and there is currently a provision of that ordinance that requires a finding, if you will, where, in the case of undergrounding or vaulting, the analysis has to be done, that steps have been taken to underground wherever possible.
So fiber optics is not even an option for us to say to you, oh, no, we don't want to do this, we want to do fiber optics underground? So that's not on the table, correct?
We're responding to the applications that have been presented to us.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a question for Lee in response to one of the comments that came forward, and that is, can you, from an engineer's standpoint, speak to the comment that the radiation from a 5G device is multiple times, emits multiple times more radiation than the 4G? And I do believe that there are some 5Gs actually installed in the state of California, so I'm guessing that somebody's been making some evaluations as far as what they've been radiating.
Let me answer the question the best I can. I, I'm not aware of any approved 5G equipment. By approved, I mean on a national basis, there is pilot equipment out, as best I know. But to answer your question, any equipment that's put out there for 5G is going to have to be compliant unless the FCC modifies their radiation standards. In other words, their radiation standards cover the entire radio frequency spectrum. There are rules for that. If the, whatever the technology, 5G finally ends up on, whatever frequency bands, it will have to be in compliance with this document, or the document will have to be modified.
And a, and a follow-up question, because you had mentioned that at one point in your career, you were involved with the FCC. Has there been any instances where the, the acceptable rates have been increased?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, no, not that I'm aware. And the, there has been numerous calls to the FCC to continually reevaluate this, but like most things in the federal government, it's trickling along, yes. And, and there's no question, there, there is in the public record, a number of comments that they've gotten to address many of the things the community has brought here today. This is, this is not something that they're not aware of. I will say this, in the Montgomery County area, which is one of our cities we work with, several of the commissioners live there and have been asked to come to public sessions like this and have not attended them, so you can, I don't know quite sure how tuned in they are.
Well, I think from an agenda standpoint, we're finally are going to get to 7.2, but for a variety of reasons, I'm going to ask that we take a 10-minute break, and when we reconvene, we'll be going right into the 7.2, which will be the proposed, the proposed towers, 0.06 and 12. So please reconvene at five minutes to nine.
So with that in mind, I'd like to bring the next item of the board's. Agenda seven point two, which is an introduction and discussion of the Verizon cell site commercial use permit.
Thank you for reminding me, and it's for application zone Sonoma zero six and zero one two. And with that, I would like to turn it over for our director to give us a staff report, please.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair Commissioner, David Storey, Planning and Community Services Director. We have before you tonight three commercial use permits, and we are going to break them into two. We've called them zero zero six, zero zero seven, and zero one two, primarily because that's the nomenclature used by Verizon to distinguish their towers. These are three particular applications located in commercial zoning districts as opposed to some that you've heard about before mentioned with respect to use permits requests in the residential zones of the community. There are seven applications that are currently pending or suspended, if you will. Pending but suspended, excuse me, I may have misspoken there, but have been suspended and are not a part of any application we have to respond to this evening. So again, each site that we're going to talk about tonight has certain types of specifications dealing with steffing of the radio units. We also have canisters, if you will, for the towers themselves. And the two applications that we need to speak about tonight, prior to Commissioner McDonald having to leave, I do want to show you this particular project location because of proximity. An earlier question was raised about the distance between towers. Zero zero six and zero zero seven, I believe, is around two thousand, anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand feet. The distance between zero seven and zero one two, I believe, is around a thousand, maybe a little bit less. So obviously you can compute from that that the distance between zero six and twelve is much larger than the two thousand feet that I mentioned or so. So as you can see, zero zero six and zero zero, zero one two are the two specific applications that we'll talk about at this point. Here you can see a location map. This is our zoning map that shows the location of zero six on the west side of Fifth Street West. You can see zero zero one two, again, on the west street of First Street West. Particular to zero six, the surrounding land uses, you can see the Sonoma Market to the west of the site. Again, we're in the public right of way, so the star pretty closely accurately reflects the location of the tower that we'll be showing in just a moment. You can see that there is multifamily residential in and around the property. But again, based on the prior map here, you can see that there's commercial on either side, mixed use and residential nearby. This particular slide shows the exact tower that's being proposed to be used for the location of the tower. You can see that it's a pole that's between two poles that have a lot heavier burden on them. The proposal that we have before us tonight at this location will be continuing to use that very pole with the pole, excuse me, with the tower being placed on the under story, if you will, midway, just slightly north of the higher than the the under story. I forget the word that Lee used for describing it, but it was the ancillary. It's not powered, there we go, I'll just say that's not powered, no, this is for the telephone and other types of services. The first slide shows a south-east direction from the east side of Fifth Street West. The second slide is from the south side looking north-northeast on the south side of West Napa. Again, surrounding land uses, we have mixed use, we have commercial. The yellow is for single-family residential. The slightly pink color, if you will, is the mixed use, which can have a combination of residential and commercial uses within them. The photo simulations of those that are provided by CBR that represents Verizon in this case, you can see existing conditions to the left and proposed support equipment to the right. You can see the proposed antenna, as I mentioned, just slightly taller than the the under story existing facilities. This would be the schematic that they've provided to us. You can see that, again, this is, this tower will be the tower that the support infrastructure will be placed along with the antenna. You can see that the radios and the other kind of things that we've talked about tonight, there's a, an on-off switch, if you will, or power supply switch and a disconnect, I think it's called, and also there's a PGNE meter that's been provided. This particular slide is on the west side of West, of West, Fifth Street West, on the south side of Napa. So you can see in the vicinity, we currently have existing infrastructure. You see one in the foreground and one in the near ground. This particular piece of underground equipment is located at the second tower, if you will, which is to the left of the red circle there, as opposed to the one to the right, which has the larger set of equipment on it. So again, clearly, we have the spacing, we have the ability to vault these particular type of installations. The second application that we have in this cluster tonight in my report is with respect, respect to a pole on First West Street at the corner of McDonald. And you can see that this will be at the northeast corner of the intersection. You can see a tree there to the left of the pole, that's the existing pole. That pole will be removed and replaced with a new pole at that location. The picture to the, to below is looking at the infrastructure on the other side of the street. You can also see here the surrounding, and you can see why it's called a commercial site, if you will, because there's commercial land use all the way around. You can also see the the pink where we show mixed use. The single-family residential zones are further to the east on the east side of Broadway. This is an aerial photograph that shows you the site, that's the particular location on the east side of First West. These two photographs just, again, similarly show you that nearby vaulting is done, that has, is done by the utility companies. The one on the right is interesting because that particular photograph is inside the street, the traveled way, if you will, as opposed to the sidewalk. So vaults can be placed underground in locations. This one may be interesting because of other site difficulties with respect to the sidewalk area and also sewer and water and other kind of infrastructure that may be there for public infrastructure. The simulation, again, shows the support equipment to the right on top of the existing pole. This particular application is different from the first in that the antenna, the proposed antenna is on top of the the pole, if you will. You can kind of see it there, probably about ten feet taller than the existing pole, which will be the same height of poles in and around the area. And then, again, this particular pole will be one that is replaced in place, if you will. Again, you can see the support equipment. It's the same type of infrastructure on each pole, other than the canister or the antenna is located on the top of the pole. I'll take this moment right now to conclude this presentation of mine and be willing to take questions from staff, also of council, if you will, or Mr. Afflerbach. And then you can then, after that, turn the time over to the public for comment on these two applications. This concludes my report.
Any questions?
I just have a couple of quick questions. Are, in all three of these locations, there are underground vaults that could be used for this equipment? Am I correct?
I'll talk about the two app, I'll talk about the two applications that I've just spoken.
Okay, sorry for making.
So the first application, the answer is yes, there are nearby vaults in close proximity to these proposed locations.
And the second one?
Both.
Okay, both, thank you.
I had a question about the the two applications. I know that there's been a lot of information submitted by the applicant, maybe it should be directed at the applicant, but I was wondering if there was any feasibility options of looking on private property other than the public right of way. In the past, I mean, I've been familiar with other applications in the past where these installations were incorporated into the architecture of buildings, hidden in storage rooms, having lease agreements with private property owners, and still being able to satisfy their obligation and without having to go through the public right of way or be on a pole, so to speak. Has the applicant submitted anything to staff or to the city attorney's office that shows that they have tried to look at different venues to 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 install these before coming before the city with a public right of way application?
I'm not sure quite how to answer the question primarily because I know that the applications were submitted prior to my arrival, so I'll defer to staff, to legal counsel, if they're familiar. I'm not familiar, I don't believe I've seen any materials. And the submittals that were received by the city on October the eleventh, that analysis was not there. We had the RF analysis and the undergrounding feasibility analysis, and I'll defer to the applicant as to whether that was provided to the city. I'm not aware that it exists. I know that they presented to our prior planner that that study or analysis had been completed, but whether we received that, I don't know.
Okay, the reason why I bring it up is that, for example, the the Fifth Street West application, there's a large market across the street, there's a bank, and they're one story, and I just thought that that would be something that should be considered.
And we mentioned, yes, obviously, the private property is regulated under our code. That would be perhaps a preferred option, but they do have the prerogative to come and ask for the ability to operate within the public right of way equally or as easily as providing towers, if you will, on private property, whether it's in a tower or a bank or something of that nature. I believe that their analysis may have been doing alternative analysis within the public right of way. I don't know that they actually studied other locations on private property.
Okay, and I wanted to get a better sense of the widths of the sidewalks on Fifth Street West and also on First Street West. Just what are, what's the sidewalk width, the distance between like the edge of curb and the the utility pole? Adequacy for handicapped accessibility, those sorts of issues. I know that one on First Street West is really tight.
Yeah, certainly much tighter, if you will, than the one that I'm just showing here on zero six. I want to say six to eight feet from edge of curb, face of curb to the curb that you see there to the right of the picture. I don't believe that's the distance that we have on First Street West, I believe it's probably more closer to six.
Okay, and then my last question has to do with, I know that we clearly don't have any plan for underground utilities, but do we have a a street tree master planning for any of these major arterials like Fifth Street West? Or do we have a a street tree plan or planting plan for the historic district that might conflict with?
I'm not aware of a master plan for certain, specify certain types of trees. What I will tell you, and I wish I would have remembered this in my presentation, the Fifth Street West project that you see here, zero six, is not within the historic district overlay, the other two are within it.
Okay, and if the city were to plant trees and make public improvements along Fifth Street West, would, my understanding is that trees could obscure the 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 telecommunications aspects of the the infrastructure. Would the city be encumbered in any way to, for example, plant trees along Fifth Street West after we've approved a use permit like this?
I'll leave that to council to to address, but what I can tell you is that in our new ordinance, and I'd have to believe that the current ordinance would say something of the same kind, that if there's a conflict with us bringing in new infrastructure, whether it's sewer or water or some kind of need to go into the vault, we'd have to, I think we do have the ability to have things relocated, but in the case of an underground vault, I'm not quite sure how that would work.
Okay, and then my very last question has to do with the use permit application itself. We've we've approved so many use permits in the past, and we've had each one on a case-by-case, crafting them and sometimes adding conditions. Is there the ability for our commission to add, for example, like a sunset clause? I know that this particular application doesn't have to comply with the new urgency ordinance, but we as a commission, do we have the ability to approve a use permit with a sunset clause or a limitation as these two that are before us?
I would say that under, I'm not looking at the chapter five point three two, but under state law, cities can establish a ten-year, no less than, but a ten-year period for a permit. So I would say that is a condition that if the planning commission were so inclined, that it it could direct staff to prepare for for the use permit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I have a question, I think this may be for Mr. Afflerbach. The the RRU is the Remote Radio, Radio Remote Units. Obviously, because they're on the pole, they're being mounted vertically, but there's nothing about their operation that would preclude them from, if they were in a different location, of like being mounted horizontally, so in a sense of, if you had to do a vault-type installation, I mean, you would only have to excavate a few feet to drop one of those in the ground, is that correct?
Well, first of all, they're limited by the range that they can, a distance they can be from the antenna because of coaxial losses. I think Verizon normally tries to keep that with about fifty feet. I don't want to be their engineer, but there are, there are clearly limitations, and the further away you get, the bigger the coax gets, you know, the change of loss. As far as how they're mounted, it makes no difference, except if they're underground, there's no air circulation. Remember, these are convection cooled, these radios on the pole, air flows through them. If you put them in the, on the underground, then you have issues both of water and airflow, and that's a civil engineering problem.
Okay, are, so they're not like, you couldn't have heat sinks or anything like that, like you would to facilitate cooling?
No, they, well, they could design, I guess, but the the normal way of doing this is fans, you know. Fans, the combination of fans to get air through and pumps to keep the water out. And I guess one other thing, I won't know if it's clear or not, these would have to be, if you, if they were to go to vaults, they'd have to be vaults for this purpose, they don't share vaults with, you know, power utilities or other companies. So it'd be new ball, new vaults.
All right, if we have no more comments, the the next item will be to invite the applicant up to the dais where.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
Could I, could I just add something just before the applicant begins? There is attachment eight in the planning commission packet, and it includes the standards and the findings, or in other words, the regulations, not just under the use permit chapter, which this commission is very familiar with, but also under chapter five point three two. So it is the commission's province tonight to consider those findings, to consider the applications, to determine whether the the findings can be made, both under the use permit chapter and under chapter five point three two. Because under chapter five point three two, such facilities are permitted with a use permit. Now, what is important, however, is for the commission to know. In addition to those standards, there is a federal law preclusion, which is that cities are prohibited from regulating the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities, such as these, on the basis of environmental effects, radio frequency emissions, to the extent that those facilities comply with the FCC standards. And as another attachment in your packet is Mr. Afflerbach's report, CTC Technology and Energy, which confirms compliance with the FCC standards. So that is the due diligence that the city is allowed to go into and is is basically the parameters of what the city can do as far as making decisions on the placement of these facilities for RF emissions effects.
Thank you, council. Now, I'd like to invite the applicant forward to give him an opportunity to present, and you have a fat ten minutes.
If you can give me just a moment to get my setup going, I appreciate it. We trialed it earlier, so. Thank you, good evening, commissioners. I want to first start off by saying thank you to the staff and particularly to Lee Afflerbach for providing a lot of background and context to our proposals tonight, it's very helpful. I know there's a lot of information that we're going to go through, and I know there's been some comments already from you that are questions probably appropriate to us that we're going to try to answer, and we're available for 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 questions and answers, obviously, after our presentation. And also, I don't want to bury you in minutia as to your request, but there is a lot of information for us to go through. And if I miss anything or go too fast, I'm happy to answer questions along the way. With me tonight, my name is Mark Peters, I'm with the CBR Group. We are a engineering and site development firm that represent Verizon as the applicant for these applications. With me tonight, I have Christie Beltran from my company, Paul Albritton from Verizon's outside counsel, Snehal Toari from Verizon Network Engineering, Jennifer Haas from Verizon Real Estate is with us tonight, and Bill Hammett of Hammett and Edison Corporation, who is a third-party engineering firm, who's a subject matter expert in emissions and can speak to the emissions for our facilities and a lot of general questions about that, if you so desire. Verizon, this is the overview of our facilities. Verizon is simply adding telephony equipment to existing utility poles or replacing those poles as necessary to meet safety standards in the public right of way. The facilities that we're talking about on this public hearing are both located in commercial zones and are appropriate for said types of facilities to our application. We have been working on these projects for quite some time. We started probably nine months before the city ever saw an application from us. We have to go through a, quite a bit of regulation and guidelines on which poles that we can utilize. Over the course since two thousand seventeen, June two thousand seventeen, when we made our initial planning applications, we have worked with staff and we've modified the design several times. When the fires happened last year, we paused while you guys were in an emergency status to allow you to respond to the the tragedies that that occurred, and and then in January, we picked back up the conversations with the city. We did hold a public outreach meeting, we we only had one attendant, Mr. McGavin. We followed the the noticing procedures outlined by the city for that meeting and didn't really have a lot of community participation. In August, we received some additional comments, and we continue to work through those comments with staff and your third-party review engineer with staff and your third-party review engineer to improve our aesthetic design that we have for you tonight. And our objective tonight is to talk a bit about our design, to tell you what options we do have available, because we do have some options available, and the constrictions that we work with in placing these facilities on utility poles. Our design history started with a facility that had three RRU units and a ground cabinet that had emergency backup. Due to noise requirements, the battery backup equipment has a fan that produces noise, we removed that in our second design iteration. In our second design iteration, we removed one of the remote radio units to get down to two, to, to improve their appearance, we've mounted them vertically on the pole. And we have most recently reduced the antenna size from four foot vertically to two foot vertically. The designs that we have are governed by a number of regulations, and I want to first and foremost say that these are safe designs. My company does structural engineering through OCALPRO, which is an industry standard for structural evaluation. PG&E also does its own structural analysis. There are guidelines set by the California Public Utilities Commission under General Order 95 that guide where and how we place equipment on the poles, and I can answer, there's a lot of information there, and I won't bore you with it now, but if you have questions about it, I can certainly speak to that. Our current design, again, is two radios vertically mounted. We show some aesthetic covers that go between the RRU units and the RRU units and the meter to conceal the cabling and to help improve its visual appearance. I'm just going to go from one slide to the Sonoma six to Sonoma 12 here, to give you an idea. There is a meter required by PG&E to power the facility, and above that meter, there's a safety disconnect, and the safety disconnect is so that in event of an emergency, your local public works folks, or PG&E, or AT&amp;T's personnel can shut the facility down in an emergency. We have a number of design options with this configuration of components available to us, which includes just the bare radios with the cabling exposed, which is the minimum amount of equipment on the pole. The two radios with the solar shield design, which is in our construction drawings or designs that we've had submitted to the city. We also have a cage option, a shroud, that, that conceals that equipment. And the, the, the option D is a mesh cabinet, because it has, it allows airflow, there's no cooling fans, and we could take the equipment off the pole and place it on the ground, above ground. And I'd like to invite up Paul Albritton to, to speak a little further.
Okay, Paul Albritton, outside counsel for Verizon, thank you so much for all of your time this evening, we appreciate it. There's been discussion about vaulting of the radios. I'm going to have Mark go back and show you, there are two RRUs remaining, this is nice that they brought a mock-up for us, but in the, the left, the radio on the left is the RRU, about 27 inches tall, and if you look at the slide, it's the two little green boxes on the side of the pole there, those are the only two units that can go underground. The PG&E meter and the, and the switch have to remain on the pole so that PG&E can access them. If you can imagine that little box about five feet above the roof of this building, ceiling, and then the other one above it with the cables covered with shrouding, that's the visual impact we're talking about. Those radios have been designed to put on a telephone pole by the company, so that they're narrow, they're about 12 inches wide, about the width of the pole, they have no fans, no moving parts, and this radio was designed to go on a utility pole, and there are thousands of them on utility poles across the country and in California. The vault that Verizon, Crown Castle is, provides services to Verizon Wireless, they experimented essentially with a vault, this vault is in Santa Cruz, and the dimensions are approximately five by eight inch feet, it allows six by four feet in the interior, and this particular vault requires two vents, each of them 28 inches square on either side, and then two sump pumps in the bottom, and that's to keep these little radios cool and to keep them dry. And this particular vault, I can tell you, would not pass the nighttime noise ordinances in, in Sonoma because of the fans when they're running to cool. And we believe that a vault that's about the size of this area here is overkill for those two little radios that would be mounted up in the air with covers over the cables. I can go into that further. I want to touch on the law really quickly. We're going to run out of our time here, in two minutes. So I'll just say quickly that telephone corporations in California have the right to locate their facilities on telephone poles in the right-of-way, and that's basically what we're doing, we're putting telephone equipment on telephone poles. The FCC just recently confirmed that in an order that they released just last month, that, that densifying our networks and putting these facilities, these small cells you heard Lee talk about, is important for providing the services that are being demanded by the community. If we go to the next slide, what services are being demanded? Actually, this is, I'll touch on this again, more if you wish, I've been practicing in this area for 30 years, but the federal law, as you heard, doesn't allow for the regulation of wireless facilities based on environmental effects or radio frequency emissions. I put a little picture of Bill Hammett's report where he reviews these actual installations, he's here, he can tell you more about it. I wanted to tell you that there's case law that extends that to property values, so denials that were, other jurisdictions in the past, 10 years ago, said it's property values, it's not the RF emissions, it's property values, and the federal court said, no, that's the same thing as denying it based on, on health effects. And so that's, that's a non-issue, and in fact, Money Magazine recently reported that for millennials, wireless service is more important than the school district they're in. So it actually has a very positive effect on property values, can have. The next slide shows, shows, this is a test that was done, this is from the San Rosa Press Democrat, where they're testing the new text message system to try and avoid the, the messages that were not sent a year ago during the fire. And what we've seen is a tremendous growth in demand for these, for these facilities. We expect seven times increased demand over the next, by 2023. 52% of households now don't have a wireline phone, they're just wireless. I say I'm running out of time, but small cells are designed to provide service where they're, where it's needed. So my last slide, I wanted you to know that during the fire last year, October 13th, Verizon Wireless was called by your police department because they couldn't get the wireless service to run their devices. And so Verizon Wireless came in and put a cradle point router, it's called, in the emergency operations center, which I believe is right here, and is shown as a star on the map, and you can see where these small cells will help provide that, in order to provide a wireless bubble so that the police department and the emergency operations center would work during a crisis situation. The demand is here, and the cell phones and this service actually saves lives. I know you heard a lot about how it threatens lives, but that's the reason that Verizon wants to bring the service here to Sonoma. And we'd be happy to answer your questions, sorry we rushed through, but I think we made 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, Wendy, can you turn on the overhead for me, please? I don't know if we have to disconnect here or not. It may pop up here in just a second, I don't know. Does he have to disconnect? Okay. This will be more of an educating David kind of a moment, so I apologize, and if you'll indulge me for a moment. We've heard Mr. Afflerbach talk tonight about 5G, 3G, 4G. This is a photograph of a Verizon facility in Sacramento on 21st Street. I live in Folsom, so on the way to work one day, I took a few photographs because Mr. Steinberg was very impressed with the city of Sacramento relative to establishing 5G on October the 1st of this year. I think this is one of the 5G addresses that the city of Sacramento advertises being one of their sites for 5G, and as you can see, the infrastructure there only shows the power disconnect and not a power meter from PG&E, I'm assuming it's PG&E, so I would be interested in hearing from the Verizon folks why this technology. I do know that the, the RRUs are located in the head with the, with the antenna. I'm not asking for a design change here, I'm just trying to understand the technology, so maybe that could help the commission, because these things are out there today.
Absolutely, and Bill Hammett and I were both up testifying to have these facilities approved in Sacramento, and this 5G is actually point-to-point 5G, so it provides service similar to your cable service to 1 gigabit service rather than mobile service. The power here is obtained from SMUD. So because we're obtaining the power from Sacramento, we have a financial deal with Sacramento where we don't have to put a meter on and meter the power. The same thing is true in Palo Alto, Palo Alto is a municipal electric, so they don't, they charge us a flat rate for the power. Here, we have to get our power from PG&E, and we are subject to PG&E's requirements, and hence, and they, they make us pay like every other customer. So the, the meter that's being placed on the pole is similar to the meter that you would have at your house, basically. There are, we would like to talk to you about designs, we're not in favor of vaulting. The radios are changing all the time. We're, as you can see, we've gone from the larger radio that's been removed to those RRU 32s, which are narrower, and there are smaller radios that are coming as well, and it's possible that we could get to a design solution that uses a different type of meter, and we'd like to work with you on that, and that, we appreciate all the input that you give. We'd like to work more towards a design that works on the pole than, than the vaulting concept. Our biggest problem with the vaulting is it has affected the reliability of our network. When the power goes out and the fans go out and the pumps go out, the network goes, goes dead because the radios are wet, and radios just don't go underground very well. PG&E wires, PG&E lines, that sort of thing, don't have to be fan cooled, these radios have to be fan cooled, so you don't see this kind of transceiver equipment underground. But I hope that answers your question about the power. And in this case, the 5G unit is, the radio and the antenna are combined into a single box. So it's like taking, and this is, this is a four-foot antenna, we reduced it to a two-foot antenna, but it's like combining, putting the radio and the antenna all into one box, and that's why it has to be mounted off the, off the pole that way, but it, it, it does affect the volume of equipment.
And so, Mr. Chair, if I can, just another question for educating David. Did I hear that SMUD and the city of Sacramento are one and the same entity? Because I, I understand that there's two separate entities for power supply, I don't think the city of SAC supplies power?
It's a, we have a, what's called a public-private partnership agreement with Sacramento, and it was bundled into an agreement that we did, that we're providing fiber and a lot of other things to Sacramento. Sacramento was very anxious to get 5G service, like San Jose, like San Diego, like Los Angeles, there are arrangements with the city of Newport Beach that were, that are being made in order to facilitate the provision of, of wireless services. If Sonoma, city of Sonoma, was in charge of the power, then that would be something that could be accomplished. Now, for example, in San Francisco, and the small cell technology isn't that new, we've been putting small cells in San Francisco for over a decade, and we get, we use the light standards in San Francisco. So we, because the light standards are owned by San Francisco Public Utility Commission, we get power from San Francisco Public Utility Commission, and so there are approximately 300, 400 light standards in San Francisco that have these facilities, and, and there's no meters because we buy the power from the city. So that's the, that's the arrangement, and I, honestly, I don't know the exact arrangement between SMUD and the city of Sacramento.
So, any questions for the applicant?
I have a question for the applicant, yes. And what's the cost differential from vaulting the, the equipment or putting it up on the pole?
There's a significant cost difference, there's a significant construction requirement to put these vaults in the ground. We have some, some materials that we provided, that I believe that it's in your staff report that shows the impact during construction, it's a very large hole that has to be dug, it takes about 30 days of construction.
I understand what vaulting is, I, I understand, I want a dollar amount, what's the difference?
It's four or five times. Dollar amount difference?
I was trying to get a confirmation of, of a dollar amount. My understanding is this, in order to excavate the 11, I had the numbers, 18 by 11-foot hole, shore it, because it has to be shored to OSHA standards, bring a crane in, there are pictures of this, by the way, in our, in our, in our submission, drop the vault in, and then, obviously, to wire up the equipment and cover it up again, is, I understand it, around $50,000, something like that, more?
Twice that.
Hundred thousand, okay.
I can't tell you exactly.
Fifty to $100,000. Then there's operational costs beyond that, because when, when we go to maintain this, a guy in a truck, pickup truck or a van, comes with a laptop and can see, and he can, and he can take measurements and make sure that it's working properly. If we want to put in a smaller radio, and the radios are getting smaller, they can come and remove and replace the radio. If it's in a vault, we have to close the street, the sidewalk, we have to open the vault, there has to be somebody who goes into the vault while another worker stands by and waits and makes sure that nobody, he doesn't get stuck in the vault or something. So there are ongoing operational costs in addition to maintaining the fans and the pumps and making sure that they're working and that sort of thing. So the long-term costs are very high. Now, we don't usually talk about costs, because we don't figure that that's an issue that jurisdictions care about. But the FCC, in its recent order, said that excessive costs per site can constitute a material inhibition to the provision of wireless services and can constitute a prohibition of service in violation of federal law. So suddenly, costs, the FCC has sort of thrown costs into the barrel in their September order.
I have a question. Your original plan had 10 small cell sites. We heard earlier today from the consultant that any carrier would want anywhere from 25 to 30 cell sites a square mile, so that could be roughly 50 or more for Verizon just in the city of Sonoma. And so your applicant, you, you're requesting three tonight, and I'm just curious, if our municipal, our emergency ordinance prohibits cell sites in residential zones, which is the vast majority of Sonoma, why, why proceed with these applications if you can't put together the network you want to put together in Sonoma?
Okay, so, three-part answer. The principal purpose for these small cells is to relieve capacity concerns. So when the police department needed wireless service for their, all of their data for their laptops and everything else, and we brought a cradle point router in here, it's not because you couldn't get a signal, you could get a signal, but there were too many people accessing the network in order, for the system to keep up. So the sectors were what we call exhausted. By creating a, a capacity bubble here with that cradle point router on a temporary basis, they were able to provide that capacity, although they were sucking it off one of the other macro cells, so somewhere else they were having capacity problems. So these small cells provide a capacity bubble, if you will, in the area where we see maximum capacity demand, and that's why these small cells are located where they are in the residential area. And then, and this demand has been demonstrated in the fire a year ago. So that's, that's the purpose. Now, the, the per square mile service is for ubiquitous service, and I can assure you that in the three-to-five-year plans, actually Verizon calculates out about three years, they're not planning on ubiquitous service in Sonoma. We're focusing on, and San Francisco, right now, on my block and where my office is, there are three small cells, and they are well-disguised in light standards, and they're providing the kind of density that you might see in what is being described. But it's erroneous to think that you're going to have this carpet bombing of small cells throughout a community. We're going to be looking for those, the cellular network is set up like a sprinkler system with different sprinklers covering different areas, but if you have a lemon tree that needs extra water, you put a hose on it. These are like a hose, they're, they cover a capacity area, and that's, that's how we'll be developing our network. They also provide in-building service in hard-to-reach areas. If you have a small cell in an area that's hard to reach, it'll provide service to those adjacent homes, and that's why part of the initial network was to provide some residential service. But our focus right now is on these, providing a capacity offload, because our current macro cells, and there are three that service this area, are experiencing capacity exhaustion during times of high peak usage. And I think Mr. Afflerbach reviewed the, we're using higher frequencies, it's one of the reasons we need these small cells in where those macro towers can't get the higher frequencies into this capacity demand area. Hope that answers your question. But there's no plan to roll out some major 5G programs in, in Sonoma, we're trying to fulfill the requirements that you have today, and, and the densities that you're talking about are for, right now, are going to be for the urban areas where we're, we're seeing excessive demand for service.
I just want to say that your costs are on page 161. You have them in the plan.
Those are, I was trying to answer, those are estimated costs. As Verizon directly has not installed any vaults, we don't have exact numbers on that installation, Crown Castle has installed some vaults, not Verizon, we are not privy to their numbers, so we put some estimates together, and the estimates are around $100,000 for the vault.
Thanks.
I have a couple of questions about undergrounding and also your, how you proceeded in looking at other options, and I, I asked staff if you had looked at private properties, for example, on
For example, on Fist Street West, there's a number of private sites that could potentially accommodate a cell site that would still accomplish your objective. So did you do any sort of feasibility analysis? Have you at any point contacted private property owners to see if there might even be another venue for you than the public right-of-way?
Well, of course, we have private property macro cell sites right now, and so we do use a private property. I want to answer your first question, which was regarding undergrounding. And Verizon actually is, supports undergrounding, in favor of undergrounding. If this, if a utility pole were to be undergrounded, that's usually followed by streetlights, and as communities progress, we move our facilities, you know, as necessary, to streetlights. And so you'll see that in San Francisco. There's roughly 100 of utility pole facilities with the same two-foot anthanol antenna that have been there for years. And it, but in the undergrounded areas, we have light standards, and then there are transitions. So undergrounding, these facilities are not an impediment to undergrounding. I think you probably know the impediment to undergrounding is it's expensive, is money. With respect to the, putting the facilities on private property versus on utility poles, private property obviously raises a whole number of issues related to landlords and zoning. Obviously, there are many zones, you can't put wireless facilities. And in addition to that, as I pointed out, and this is a law that goes back to just after the Civil War, telephone corporations were given the right to put telephone poles in roadways throughout the state. And the state said, this is a, this is a matter, not a matter of municipal concern, this is a statewide concern to have a consecutive telephone network. And that law has been upgraded over time and applies to cellphone equipment the same way it applies to your regular telephone equipment. So as a telephone corporation, Verizon Wireless has the right to put telephone equipment on telephone poles in public roads and highways throughout the state. And accordingly, this small cell network has been designed to utilize that state franchise, it's a state franchise, to put telephone equipment on telephone poles. And if you can imagine the hundreds of jurisdictions that we work in in order to put these facilities up, it makes sense in terms of setting up our network, operating our network, the equipment that radio manufacturers design to use this ubiquitous franchise that we have in order to provide facilities. So we look to the telephone poles. Now, that's been, there has been case law in the Second Circuit that says, well, can't you, you know, can't you use alternate technologies? Can't you use some other kind of technology? And the federal courts has said that the technology that's used is really, is in the purview of the FCC. It's not in the purview of the local jurisdictions. And a local jurisdiction can't dictate the technology that we use to provide our service. So I'm sorry, I'm a lawyer, I give you a legal answer. But that's essentially the reason why this has been rolling out the way it is. And I have to add that the United States also decided that they wanted to have a competitive cellular network. We used to have AT&amp;T back in 1984. You probably remember that, what happened to AT&amp;T. And instead of China, having a China cellular company, or Japan, or other countries that have their own cellular, single cellular provider, they said, we want five providers, and we want them to compete, and we want them to make the, so that the price is low and people, everybody gets a phone. Well, it worked. There are more cell phones in the United States than there are people. And that's why we have the different companies. It's because the FCC says, we want those companies. And when the companies try and merge the FCC, they forced AT&amp;T to spin off its facilities to T-Mobile in San Francisco, so there would be competitive carriers.
Could you, could you?
Long answer, sorry.
There, so could you answer one, this first question? Macro towers, the larger ones, those you would consider something that's necessary for telecommunication and for telephone service, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And macro towers, most, for the most part, and in my background, I was an urban planner back in the 90s when the new Telecommunication Act was passed, and I spent probably four years processing cellular tower antenna applications almost exclusively on private property, where AT&amp;T and this whole series of telecommunications companies were able to successfully, without issue, obtain permission from landlords on private properties to screen and obscure and basically blend those technologies in with the community fabric. And so, please explain to me the difference between a macro tower and the telecommunications companies doing what they did for macro towers, and why these smaller cell towers and applications for 5G are different?
Sure. I could probably let Lee answer that question. But obviously, Lee showed you how the technology has changed over the years. And the initial macro towers, we used to have to rent a room, maybe half the size of this room, for all of the telephone equipment that would be used in order to operate those macro towers. And the towers would have 12 antennas, they would have, I think I heard 30,000 watts, but they would have, and they would cover a very large area, sometimes five or six miles. We still have some. I was up in Yuba County last week, there's a cell site that covers, has a radius of about six miles. And the, the concept there was, the technology did not exist to use the small cell that we have today. And at the same time, frankly, frankly, there's economies of scale. If you're going to have a system that has a six-mile radius, then you can pay rent, you can pay a lot of rent, and you can put in a large facility, you can invest in plant, you can have rooms with air conditioners, you can do all kinds of things. And that's how the cellular network started, and that's how it began. And as it has become much more pervasive in our life, we need to cell-split and get to these small cells that have newer, shorter frequencies. We can only use the frequencies the FCC sells us. And it requires bringing the antenna closer to the end user, so that the cellphone doesn't have to work so hard, and so that the antenna doesn't have to work so hard to get to that. And there, the number of sites, the sheer number of sites and the proximity of trying to get the antennas near the end user, the location of the right-of-way through the areas where we've got capacity requirements, make the use of utility poles and the right-of-way the way to go, just the way telephone poles were 100 years ago.
Just one last statement. Would you not agree with me that US Bank, Wells Fargo, and Sonoma Market, which are all one-and-a-half-story structures, the facades of those buildings, and also those facilities could actually achieve the height that you need for a smaller tower antenna, and that those site plans, parking lots, and parking areas could theoretically house whatever you need in terms of radio equipment and electrical equipment, and tie in with already improved buildings and facilities that already have PG&E power? All they need is a separate meter.
So there are technical and practical responses. These antennas have three antennas inside them that shoot in three different directions, have three sectors facing out in three different directions. When you put a cell tower up, same thing, you've got a tower. When we do facade-mounted antennas, and I'm sure you know this from your experience, you have, each sector faces a particular direction, because otherwise, it's facing into the building. So in order to use any of those buildings, we would have to have antennas on all sides. We'd have to run cables to all of them, we'd have to have radios to all of them. And we can't achieve the density of the network, and that's what small cells do, they densify the network. Can't achieve the density of the network by locating on buildings with all of these different sectors. Is it, I mean, obviously, an engineer could do anything, right? But it's the, sort of like the vault, it's the, what's, what is the problem that you're trying to solve? And if it's aesthetics. We honestly believe that these radios, which have been designed to go on a utility pole and are smaller than a transformer, mounted vertically with shields over their cables, 17 feet in the air, are much less aesthetically offensive than trying to put sectors of antennas in corners of buildings. And believe me, I go to these hearings for those exact kind of facilities that have as much or more opposition than these, than these small cells do. So I'm sure you know from your experience, those were probably not cakewalks every time those macro cells came through. So it's a, it's really, yes, yes, we're looking for a way to rapidly get this technology out, because our sectors are exhausted and we need to provide the service, all the carriers in the same way. So it's, it's, it's how can we get there? How can we get there in a scalable way? How can we provide the density that the people are demanding? And for the services that are important, like being able to make 911 calls in a fire, efficiently, without having to go through machinations of landlords and sectors of antennas and that sort of thing. And that's, that's how we ended up with the, with the technology today. And to finalize on the law, the law says, we can do that. We can decide the technology that is, we use for our network, and then finally, the law says, I have every right to do that, or Verizon Wireless does, I don't have those rights. Verizon Wireless has the right to put telephone equipment on telephone poles. So that's how you, it's not just Verizon that's putting up small cells, it's in, on utility poles and light standards, as you've heard, all the carriers are doing that. I hope that answers your question, and I appreciate the cell sites you worked on in the past.
It doesn't, it doesn't, but thank you.
Maybe not the way you like it, but I try, I try.
I have just kind of a follow-up. In, in what Commissioner McDonough was talking about, is, is, so it's not feasible to elevate an antenna on an existing structure high enough so that you get the three zones, the 120-degree directional stuff? Because it seems that it's easier to mask than on something like that. And so, just from a physical standpoint, it can't be done?
I could ask your planning director what the height limits are.
Thirty-some feet?
And how high are we allowed to go over the existing structures? Because there's what's called PIM, or passive intermodulation, from the rooftop, from the signal going out and hitting the edge of the parapet and coming back. And I hear what you're saying, but we're, it, we would be, again, redesigning the network, and it, it sounds simple, but it's, it's actually much more, you would be looking at a CUP for a 20 or 30-foot tower on top of one of those buildings, and you would, and we'd be getting variances, and we would be having a great many people that were concerned about it.
Okay. So the next question I have is, goes back to one of your illustrations where you were showing kind of the design options. One of the design options showed the radios in a caged structure, which is not unlike, you know, cages that are used in the landscape industry for water protection devices. I didn't particularly like the look of that one in the right-of-way. Is there ever any possible consideration to negotiate with the landowner that can, you know, you take it out of the sidewalk and something that supposedly landscapers do a good job and they shrub things up? In other words, get it out of the, the actual sidewalk area?
As Paul mentioned about utilizing the public right-of-way, we want to look to the public right-of-way to place these facilities, and to have especially one site to be separated into two different, you know, properties is not desirable from a variety of positions. And I don't, you know, so, because you're asking about putting the mesh cabinet on private property while utilizing the?
Well, first of all, you've got issues with ADA access when you have tight sidewalks.
Correct.
And then it is just one more encumbrances that is very visual in what would you call typical pedestrian circulation?
Yes.
So I'm just trying to think a little bit outside the box, thinking, okay, I like that, I don't like them up on the poles, even if they're brown and shielded and shredded. It's just more stuff up on a pole than already, I wish wasn't there.
Yeah. Well, in the case of Sonoma 006, you have a very wide sidewalk there. So all of the designs that we ever will submit to your jurisdiction or any other jurisdiction meet all applicable building code, ADA compliance, federal and state regulations. That's our responsibility for due diligence, and you peer review that. As far as the mesh cabinet goes and what options we have for that, I think within the public right-of-way and with a wide sidewalk, there are aesthetic, you know, topics that we can talk about to improve it beyond just the photo that I showed you. There are paint and color options to the mesh, although I will say that it is a mesh cabinet, so painting like an artistic design on it's kind of difficult because it's mesh, but it's something that we can also talk about. We can also talk about, within the public right-of-way, there was talk about, you know, city trees earlier by the, by the staff, that if the city wanted to maintain landscaping, if there was enough space, that's something that would be appropriate. We have done in other communities with that mesh cabinet, where the city took over responsibility to have some foliage in front of it, which we would, could, Verizon could install it. We don't have a way to maintain landscaping, Verizon doesn't employ landscapers. So they don't have a problem installing it, but we can maintain it. So there are some things that we could do with the mesh cabinet design, I think, that might, if you help provide some feedback and context and direction to staff, that we could work with staff over a period of time to come up with some, you know, designs that you guys might approve.
We've been across the county, we had communities that would prefer to, a little four-foot ground-mounted, preferred a little four-foot ground-mounted cabinet to the radios. They had a sloping hillside, so that the radios had a more impact, greater impact on views. These are mounted above the pedestrian's line of sight, which is the idea, they're 12, 15 feet up in the air, so that the normal pedestrian view is not of those. We would be, where appropriate, and I don't know in this case, be willing to plant street trees or place street trees around the poles in order to minimize the impact of any kind of pedestrian views on them. But there are the ground-mounted solutions, there are different box design solutions. There may be, we could work with staff on potentially some smaller radios or radios that are mounted in a different way to try and minimize that aesthetic impact, but ground-mounted cabinets are certainly an option. But as Mark said, we generally don't cross over into a private property.
I also want to, just as part of that, just to, there was an earlier question that was raised about the orientation of the radios, and couldn't they be flat? These radios need to be, they're designed to be mounted vertically. Their airflow characteristics are designed where heat rises, they have fins underneath the, their covers that allow air to rise. So they, in fact, must be mounted vertically per the manufacturers. And these are, these are not like splice boxes that PG&E has or high voltage. These devices are cutting-edge technology that move data at the millions, upon millions of bytes per second. So they are fairly sensitive. They're built to be robust and go outside, but they do have some particular operating conditions, one of them is mounted vertically.
Another question, and this may have been discussed earlier in the consultant's presentation, but roughly, what is the radius that each of these small cells will serve? I mean, is it 500 feet, 600 feet?
So the, there are?
Like the one at Sonoma Market, how?
Yeah, and we could maybe have Verizon Engineering, if my answer doesn't satisfy you, maybe talk a little bit about it. There are a few variables that go into that. Number one is the height of the antenna. So the height of the antenna, you know, radio waves work line of sight, so the higher the antenna is, the farther it will travel. Now, the, when you, at first blush, when you think about that, you go, well, let's just put an antenna up, you know, 35,000 feet, it will cover everything. The problem is, though, with one antenna and one frequency, the capacity gets consumed pretty quickly. The frequencies need to be reused, and part of the small cell strategy is that you have frequency A here, you can reuse it here, you can reuse it here. If those facilities overlap themselves too much, they get what they call pilot pollution. And some other people could talk in greater depth than me, and you guys may or may not want to hear about that. But if you overlap the signal too much, it causes interference with itself. So it's important that the site covers as much as the RF design team at the carrier designs it to cover. As far as how far it can, you know, it's line-of-sight technology, and there's a beam width pattern that goes with the antenna. And the antenna selection that they choose in design has an effect on it, because they have antennas that have different apertures, so the direction the beam points, how wide the beam is, how much up tilt the beam has, that goes into network design. They also take into account the macro sites that are in the network, where there are holes, where there are capacity needs. holes, where there are capacity needs. And into Paul's, you know, analogy earlier of, you know, the the water hose guarding, you know, watering the lemon tree where you need point specific, the small cells and smaller, lower antennas help in particularly capacity demand areas that help the macro site take some of the pressure off the macro site so that it can continue to provide capacity for farther away areas. So that's a lot of answer for you.
I think Lee said 700 feet.
That's a much shorter answer than mine.
But but the, as Mark was saying, we started out with a four-foot antenna because the antenna is like the lens on a flashlight. And and the taller it is, the more narrow it can make the beam and the farther the signal will transfer. So the shorter the beam, the shorter the antenna, the shorter or the more less narrow the beam and the shorter the distance. So it's a function of the radios, the power of the radios, the antenna itself and the gain from the antennas and then what sectors it's in. And down tilt, and Lee, I don't know if you want to add to that, but there there are variables that allow out of 500 to 1,000 feet, depending on the radio.
When we did it, we did an independent analysis of the ones that you had using our own software, actually FCC software. And what we found is a lot, most of the variation has to do with buildings and structures that were nearby, which is kind of logical. In other words, you get building structures, if you're going down a street that's open, they'll go a little further. But if you figure on an average, 500 foot is a is a minimum range, this is based on their their 80 dB contour to about 700 feet, that's about average. This is not a precise science. And one of the things that they have working for them at Verizon is their Network Control Center. If it if it turns out to get a little further, they back the power off. If they need a little more power, they they move it ahead. So these these networks are dynamically operated. It's not something like they're they sit there in a static mode. But the the important thing I think to realize in the small cell is is we're not really trying to get maximum range. We're trying to get that right. They are trying to get a ratio where they take the resources, the limited spectrum resources they have and share it in an equal fashion. Example, you're out in the middle of nowhere, like where I live down East Shore, Chesapeake Bay. And so you can shoot signals out three or four miles because there aren't that many people that live in that area. There aren't that many users. Even if they have three phones going at one time, not going to be a problem. If you get an area where it's highly dense around business areas and such like that, what you end up with is you want to make those circuits, those service areas match the capacity so that everybody gets a reasonable amount. And then the other thing that's important here, because you do have good coverage from your core sites, and that is that the core sites then hit those areas that are not in the areas by the small cells. So that's why the architecture that they're using makes sense. But if you if you just wanted to roll a thumb, I think the 570-foot numbers, that's pretty much what I see across the country. And I might add that the ones where we were talking about 25 and so, those were in areas where Verizon or AT&amp;T were the two models we had wanted to saturate the area. There were saturation programs that they had. And that's why you got those big numbers.
So sorry for the long answers, but I mentioned that there are three around my office. Those are using five watt radios and two-foot antennas. These are 40 watt radios, and they were proposed with a four-foot antenna. So they're small cells that cover smaller and larger areas depending on the density that we're trying to achieve.
I I have one more question, actually. I know we're when we're looking at a commission, we're always looking at compliance with many government requirements, federal laws, as well as state and our local ones. One of the speakers came up and was addressing the commission who had EMS and was concerned about ADA compliance and the American Disabilities Act. And I guess my question is both directed to the applicant, but also our city attorney. In terms of compliance with ADA requirements, if there is a class of people that are considered disabled and the city approves at its discretion a particular item such as one of these use permits, what is the obligation that the city have with respect to EMS? And also, what do we need to, as a municipal corporation, protect ourselves as if we approve a project that could theoretically be not in compliance with ADA? Or should I?
I'll kind of try to summarize, but I'm certainly going to also let the applicant respond to that. Well, there are there are a lot of facets to liability under ADA. The important thing, I think, for for cities is that it has to be an actual program or a service or an activity that the city is providing. Here, what the city is doing is the city is making a determination on an application for a permit by another party and another party's program and another party's service and another party's activity. So I do think that it would be a tough case for for liability under ADA against a city, from what I've heard. Although, as I've said, there are a lot of facets to ADA and and I'm not familiar with the disability. But it is, I think, important again, that since cities are not free to regulate placement on the basis of RF emissions, there would certainly be a strong argument that cities were merely complying with federal law as as they had to in in any such case.
Okay.
And and we you mentioned your new ordinance that includes an indemnity provision and Verizon traditionally has, there's an indemnity provision or condition of approval that we indemnify you for any liability resulting from the granting of the permit. And that's that's fairly standard. Mark had an answer.
I'm glad to hear you agree with the indemnification council.
I haven't read it yet, but.
I'm going to remember that.
So we're the design firm. I am not a registered professional engineer, but I have some that work for me. And the there is a lot of very specific ADA information that's in the California Building Code, the Uniform Building Code. And to my knowledge, there are no specifics regarding EMS, not to demean anybody's position or malady. There's no clear guidance to us from the FCC or from the building code standards that my engineers use to design facilities that addresses those points.
And the the federal law is very clear that if we demonstrate that we comply with the emissions that are in OET 65, that that you cannot, the site can't be denied on that basis. And that's very clear, there's lots of federal case law on that. And the the standards that were designed by the FCC are, excuse me, were implemented by the FCC, are reviewed by the IEEE just about every seven years. I think they just finished a review this year. And they take into account exposures of all kinds. So it's a.
I I understand that. What I'm trying to get at is to make sure that we, as a commission, we, as a council, we, as a municipal corporation, are not held responsible if there is a class action lawsuit and because of what would maybe be considered a violation of somebody's rights or, in this case, ADA requirements. So that's, I think I got a kind of a an answer. So I'm just looking at it in terms of protecting the city as well. So that's what I'm, I think I got my answer.
And I think I think you got a very clear answer. You're indemnified for granting the permit. You don't really have a, you couldn't deny it on that basis under federal law.
No, I wasn't asking. I was wondering if we were then if we were protected and and not held responsible. And I think I got my answer.
As a result, you have certain immunities that I think you're.
Yeah, I think I got my answer. Thank you.
Seeing a number of questions from the commission, I now will thank you for your presentation.
We really appreciate your time. I I know that this is not how you planned on spending your evening, and we we want you to know that we do very much appreciate it.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up for public comment. And same goals and is to give you opportunity to communicate. And again, although it was stated earlier, I'd love to hear names and addresses one more time for the books.
Okay, my name is Paul McGavin. Excuse me, I'm from Petaluma. And if it's possible to get this on the screen, you can see some of the things that might set some of the record straight here because we had a lot of misinformation from these people, and I'm going to try to clear up from you. Number one, this so-called public meeting where they had an outreach to the community, they actually marketed, I think, for three days. They just put a few things on people's doors. They got zero people to show up. I didn't show. I didn't sign in. Nobody signed in. There was no outreach on this project whatsoever. You have to understand that. I have placed personally 10 or 15 calls or text messages to Kristi Beltran from the CBR Group. Not a single one was returned. This is what's going on. You're getting misinformation about many things here. They're lying about many things. Let's talk about how far out these things go, okay? We've done the calculations. We have the measurements. We know these are 2,200 watts of input power, whether they're four-foot antennas or two-foot antennas. And when you do the calculations of what the maximum possible output is for the radios, they go out miles. How many miles? Three to five miles. When you talk about macro towers, how far do they go out? In South Dakota, you put one up, 30 miles, okay? This is all easily found out when you read about it and you do the calculations. They're not giving you the straight answer. Do they are they going to come back and be more dense in Sonoma? You bet they are. Why? Because they have every right to do so with the current law setup. So at the end of the day, just don't be bamboozled into this. And I'm very concerned about what we are charging you guys to do, which is look at the full public record, of which we saw the staff report and our presentation's not in it. Yet it's been in the public record since June, and we put it again in in August and again in this week. And these are slides to show you exactly what's going on, okay? We went to each of these sites. I have sites for 006 and 007 and 012. And in each one, we placed a phone call. And each one, we measured the radio frequency microwave radiation. How much is needed to place a phone call? One radiation unit. How much is here? 600, 700, 160, plenty, plenty to make a call. There's no significant gap in coverage here. With regards to ADA, it is not a question of a class lawsuit, a class action lawsuit. It is a question of an accommodation of someone for their rights. I'm going to tell you a story. There's a there's a woman in Oregon who stood up for her rights, didn't have to sue. She went to HUD. She got an accommodation. They removed every smart meter within 1,000 feet of her house. Right now, this woman on 333 Manchero, she started that process today. She put you all on notice. You are going to have to accommodate her. You're going to have to come up with different locations for these because she lives right in the middle of this triangle. And they are within about 1,200 feet from our home and within 250 feet or 50 feet to the places where she conducts her business. This is not possible. The 1990 American with Disabilities Act is a federal law. It predated the 1996 Telecommunications Act. And it says right in the 1996 Telecommunications Act that it must adhere to the ADA. We have a conflict in our laws right now. We have an industry running wild, saying they can do anything they want, but they cannot violate ADA. So right now, you're going to have to find new locations for all three of these towers. Thank you. Oh, I have 30 seconds more. Great. So.
30 seconds over.
I'm sorry. I just saw 30. I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Campbell, 307 West Spain Street, right across from the entrance to General Vallejo's home. I understand that we might need more capacity, but I'm not sure, I am not sure that that outweighs the repercussions of possible health issues that we heard from so many of our Sonoma citizens tonight. I came to hear what I could learn from all of you, and I'm just not sure that we're looking at the whole picture thoroughly enough. We need to wait. I've lived at 307 West Spain Street for 40 years. I've worked at St. Francis Solano School for 40 years, and I have done yard duty for 40 years. And my favorite phrase is, "Safety first." So I caution you, safety first. When we saw the slide of where the Tower 006 and 007 was going to be, and I look at the colored areas, they're not colored areas. We have so many people that come to work and that's in those business areas that work long hours every day. We have three schools within that area, those not those growing, maturing bodies underneath what I don't know what we're going to call those radiation waves over our head. I think we need to know more before we jump ahead and just say, yes, we're going to do this. It's 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 important to take care of our people. That's why we're all here in Sonoma. So, safety first, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ted Sexhauer. I live at 12 Hacienda Drive in the city. So I commend the previous two speakers. I'm really shocked to hear anybody say anything like the ADA is is no good, is not going to work. I think that it should. I have a legal mind, but. Second reason I came up here is because I've heard these gentlemen discuss on 006, what was in a certain range from there. They neglected to say Sasserini School is just on the other side of Safeways. The church is across the street from that and like that. So funny, they didn't mention that. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Wellender and Planning Commissioners. My name is Carol Marcus, 873 First Street West. I'm grateful that the City Council passed an urgency ordinance on Monday night restricting the installation of 5G cell antennas and that the new ordinance, as well as the existing ordinance, prohibits the installation of these antennas in residential districts. And incidentally, the existing ordinance, there's a five-year life span of the exist for the permits, at which point they need to be re-reviewed by the Planning Commission. And I would also suggest that it be more frequent than that, like we do with music permits, that we let it go for maybe a year to see if it works or not. I don't know about the noise that's emitted from these antennas. So we look at music ordinances like that. We revisit after one year. I believe there's a sound reason that they are prohibited in residential districts. There are ample studies showing the correlation between increased exposure to 5G radio frequencies and health deterioration. Our city has a very fine-grained development pattern. Residential and small-scale commercial development coexist in close proximity to one another. It is this development pattern that accounts for much of the city's charm. In new developments, as you know, Sonoma's municipal code encourages, in fact mandates, the incorporation of housing in the commercial and mixed-use districts. In fact, it is conceivable that there would be a greater concentration of housing in the commercial and mixed-use zones because higher densities and greater heights are allowed in these zones. Thus, both the commercial and mixed-use districts are, by definition, residential districts as well. I am requesting that you deny Verizon's application to install the proposed 5G close proximity microwave radiating antennas in the three quote-unquote "commercial" locations on the grounds that it is in violation of the city's urgency ordinance, as well as the existing ordinance, which prohibits their installation in residential districts. In the three proposed locations, there is residential development in close proximity to, as well as incorporated into the commercially zoned structures. The City Council and Planning Commission have stated that they encourage the development of housing in Sonoma. The Planning Commission may waive a housing requirement in the in the commercial or mixed-use zone if there's the presence of uses or conditions incompatible with residential development. If the city begins to allow the installation of these microwave antennas in the commercial and mixed-use zoning districts, I can foresee this being used as a reason for the Planning Commission to waive housing requirements in these zones. And I don't believe that this is. and mixed-use zoning districts, I can foresee this being used as a reason for the Planning Commission to waive housing requirements in these zones. And I don't believe that this is the consequence that our municipal code intends. Our current situation and the enactment of an urgency ordinance feels a bit like David taking on Goliath. There are a host of other cities that are trying to resist this FCC onslaught of 5G wireless technology into their communities. Let Sonoma show the strength to band with other cities opposing these 5G installations, beginning by denying the application before you tonight.
Thank you, Carol.
Good evening. My name's John Duffy, and I am a locksmith, and my business is at 564 First Street West. I'm also a landlord of 572, 564, and 554, which is right under, under Site 012. Now, this site at 012 is, the antenna is 45 feet tall, and directly west of this antenna by line of sight is mixed housing, and it's all upstairs. And if you go another 50 feet, you have the city's low-income housing, which is all, a lot of it's upstairs, and it's in direct line of sight of 012. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Martholler, and 146 East Spain Street in Sonoma. I was listening to the comments made by the Verizon representatives and so forth, and took a lot of notes, and they're all scattered. I think, really, I'm kind of amazed at how bad a product they are presenting to us. It's so bad that, once again, that it's not insured. You know, imagine me being a car company, my name, my car company was Verizon, and I presented the new Verizon. And you know, some of you remember the Pinto with the gas tank and the, and it blew up, that situation? Well, it's Verizon, I'm trying to get my car on the road and you guys to approve it to drive in Sonoma streets without safety tests. You get my point? Like, the fact that was pointed out that property values cannot be considered, okay? And also, environmental health concerns cannot be considered unless it meets a certain FCC regulation, that's really bad planning, okay? It's, whoever planned that FCC regulation planned for the, for our lives to be just wrecked, okay? We can't argue on health? That's absurd, okay? That's why we're all living biological beings. We have pets, older people, middle-aged people, young people, all affected by this, and we can't argue against that? Okay, and the property values? It's really convenient that, that cannot be considered. So if I lose a couple hundred thousand dollars on my house because I chose to live in this wonderful community, but nobody pays for that? Who pays for that? I don't know where liability falls, but I can imagine some people are going to be pretty upset about all these things. And it's basically a tough job, but you all are here in this position, and you wanted this job. It's, it's your, you took on this responsibility. And whatever you decide, however you decide to, to protect us, good on you. But if something slips by, and that lady over there that's lived here for 50, 60 years, I don't know how long, or anybody here, has it, has it rough as a result of these things coming in? I know that I've done what I can do. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Lynn Marie Vincent, 65 Guadalajara Drive. Thank you for your excellent questions to the applicants. One of the questions was, why, why do you just want these two, since the whole purpose is these clustered, close proximity? And so I haven't been a lawyer for 30 years for the telecom industry. I'm a poet. But his answer, I'm sorry if I don't have it all, but he said to relieve capacity concerns. Okay, and then he talked about how during the fires, they helped out. Well, I've sent you all an article by a CBS investigative journalist, Julie Watts. It's about the exemption that the California firefighters have. You cannot put one of these cell towers on a California firefighter station because of health reasons. I'm on Facebook with the retired San Francisco captain who got these studies done that prove that these, these radiations were causing all these things that you've heard mentioned, brain tumors in the firefighters. And he got an exemption. And you can read about, this is not made up. I asked him to come and talk to us, and he said, "I'm sorry, I'm really busy," because he started a foundation called the San Francisco Firefighters, Cancer Prevention Foundation. He's too busy with his sick firefighters. If that was done, what is the difference between us and the firefighters? And if you can answer that question for me in a logical way, then you can go ahead and put these here, because you will not be able to. And if you read that article, they asked, they asked one of the people who helped negotiate it, "How, how did you do that?" And, and they said, "Well, you know, firefighters, they have a really strong lobbying group, and that's why." So I guess we're not a strong enough lobbying group here. Us neighbors who came here to ask for your help and prevent these completely unnecessary cell towers from coming to Sonoma. Thank you.
Rosemary Pedrenzini, 437 Second Street West. I'm going to try to be calm. I don't want these towers because I'm in remission from cancer. And also, six years ago, I had open-heart surgery, and I had one week to live. God is looking over me. I pray every night, and I believe in angels. Please, please, think about this. I really mean it. And you've done a good job. I love all of you. You've got a lot of good questions. So I hope the heck I live longer in this town and keep up the good work. Thank you all.
Thank you.
My name's Jennifer Cabo, and I live on 285 Napa Road. I had no intention of coming here this evening and saying anything to you, but having listened to this, why Sonoma? Why are they insisting that we need to have this in Sonoma? I've lived here for 46 years, since I was 19, and I've had AT&amp;T, that sucked. I've had Verizon for probably 30 years. It works great. I've never had a problem anywhere I've gone. Our son lives in Alaska. I can go there in the middle of Alaska, and if you know Alaska, there's nobody there. My phone worked, you know? So my question is, why Sonoma? Why do we need this here? And if all of these health concerns are truly accurate, why in the hell would you even consider doing this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Lynn Montobano. I'm Sleepy Hollow Court. A couple of things didn't add up for me. You had mentioned that the small cell complies with FCC regulations, but other companies can't use the same small cell, so you could have multiple small cells on one pole. So if one small cell complies, and say AT&amp;T comes in and their small cell complies, but combined, it doesn't comply, is that a possibility? I'm, I'm asking a question. I'm, I'm looking at you because you're the engineer.
The answer is that fact that each one of the devices is contributive. In other words, if one device, let's assume there's a level, a level of 100%, each device, for example, is 10%. If you had 10 units, you'd be up to the maximum.
If you had 11, you'd be above the maximum.
And that's exactly correct.
Okay, so you are setting a precedent if you allow this to go through. From my understanding and what I've heard tonight, is you let Verizon put small cell on a pole, and now you have no reason to say no to AT&amp;T. You, you cannot, because you allowed one company to do it. And they'll say, "Well, we comply with FCC regulations." So there's, there's something to think about. The next thing, you brought up some great questions. You have a pole that's 40 feet tall with all of their equipment on it. It's in, you know, our public right of way. What's, what's to say the radio waves go on a horizontal basis, from what I understood? It doesn't go vertical, so it goes straight out. What's to say you can't put a 10-foot pole on a 20-foot building, such as Sonoma Market or Wells Fargo? You can't, because it's cost, more cost for them to negotiate with three separate private entities than it is to come to a commission and get approval for three sites in one fell swoop. The next thing is, it's not PG&E pole, it's not a Sonoma pole, and I don't remember whose pole it was. But there is some cost or some pay that I'm sure that Verizon is giving to that company that owns that pole for them to have the right to put their equipment on it. So it sounds to me that Sonoma is, you know, we're taken upon subject liability, whether it's true liability or not, but it's subject liability for something we're not getting anything out of, except for maybe some added additional coverage that may or may not be needed. So those are the things that, when I was sitting back, I was thinking about, and I hope that you guys think about this, too. You can suspend this, this approval and get more information on some of the questions that all of you still have in your mind. You don't have to approve it today just because they're asking for your approval. Thanks.
Bear with me one more time. Tom Conlin, 18850 Robinson Road. I really wasn't going to speak to the specifics of these individual applications, but I'm struck by, if I understand the process you guys are in tonight, the new ordinance that was just passed by our City Council wouldn't apply to these three. So you're being asked to essentially work, operate on 1996 policy. And so I would encourage you to, since this, this, these applications would be under different term, different guidelines, to really use your, your authority to provide conditions of approval if you do decide to approve this tonight. If I understood the application, these, each of these would require three 40-watt radios, and that's a continuous power draw. And it requires a connection to the utility system, the utility grid. As we know, our utility grid is less reliable than it used to be in the past. In fact, PG&E is routinely turning that grid off during wind events. It may be a reasonable condition to ask for local solar photovoltaic power and a battery backup that would be providing a more continuous source of power for these, these particular radios. I don't know about the engineering behind that, but it could be something you guys could look at. The only other condition that I, comes to mind for me would be to put a crossbar so that if Ajit Pai ever comes to Sonoma, we have a place to hang him up. Thank you very much.
Morgan Momson, 636 White Briar Drive. Just a quick statement. It seemed that the gentleman talked a lot about design. I personally, personally don't care if it's invisible, if it's in some way harmful to any of us, why would we put it there? One more comment. I have Verizon, and I use my phone a lot. I'm a millennial, and I never have an issue. And if this isn't something we need right now, why rush it?
Thank you. So seeing no more movement, I'll bring it back to my fellow commissioners for discussion.
If you could just close the hearing.
I'm sorry. Yes, I can. So this means I will be closing the public hearing and bringing the discussion back to the commission.
Actually, we can do that, but I do have a couple of comments after, after the applicants have spoken to you.
You will.
So Mr. Chair, I think, turn the time over to the applicant for rebuttal. They didn't reserve the right, but they still have the right anyway.
Okay, fine. So be it.
I don't want to waste your time, and I realize now we'll have more opportunities to speak later. So I'll just say, we weren't asking for approval tonight, we're asking for design direction tonight. I wanted to make that clear. There were a couple of comments about that. I will say there is no fire department exemption. There is a provision in AB 57 that we can't get a deemed approval on a modification on a fire department because of their concerns about access, and that's the, I can get into the whole deemed approval thing, but there's no exemption. There are many facilities on, on fire departments. There was a backup battery proposed. I was commenting about backup batteries, and that was the box that was removed, and we're certainly willing to provide that. I wanted to state that Bill Hammett is here. There's a test, there's an examination of each of these facilities. They're more than 20 times below the FCC standard on the ground or the adjacent buildings. And Lee Afflerback has confirmed that we're not just a little bit, but a way lot, 20 times below the federal safety levels in terms of the amount of emissions that are coming from these facilities. Because we're going on PG&E poles, we have a right to be on telephone poles without payment of anything. We have a statewide franchise to be on PG&E poles. And I'll just leave it, that very quick comment, and then we'll come back, obviously, for the next application. Thank you for the rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks again, Mr. Chair. A couple of things, again, as you just heard, we are seeking direction on the design component. If you'll see on your screen right now, I've highlighted for you the provisions of 5.32110B4, where we're taking a review of our existing municipal code. And so that'll be the hope that we can talk about tonight as a commission, your direction with respect to undergrounding vaults to the extent possible. With respect to a conditional use permit, irrespective of what we have in 5.30, and we can certainly look at this as a staff between now and when we return, the conditional use permit, the whole point of that is to exercise discretion and to provide conditions of approval relative to the application that's in front of the commission in terms of this application. And so, to the extent that we can address concerns of the commission with conditions of approval, I believe you have discretion to do that.
Our 1996 municipal code distinguishes between residential and commercial districts, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And to approve a use permit, we have to be able to make all four findings, correct?
Yes, and I think we believe, I believe we attach that as a condition, an attachment in your packet tonight.
So if a commissioner can't make all four findings, therefore, he or she cannot approve the use permit?
That would be correct, yeah. We will need to be consistent with our general plan and the municipal code.
All right.
But we're not approving the use permit tonight.
That's right. We're having you review the design components, and also, we gave you the findings, if you will, not only of the use permit, but also of 5.32, for you to review so that you can kind of guide your mind towards that. I just want to confirm a couple of exceptions to the
I just want to confirm a couple of exceptions to the criteria that we're able to apply here, David. I assume that, it appears to me that we have no, we really don't have any authority to evaluate the RF emission issue because that's an FCC-regulated issue. Is that accurate?
Yes and no. The yes part is that you have the ability to require a study or some kind of documentation five years as a condition of approval to have those RF standards, or if you will, or we can go measure what's being put out there. The same with noise standards as well, that was discussed earlier.
Okay, but in, in general, we are somewhat insulated from that issue. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I believe Mr. Iwachi would say yes if he answered the question.
The other, and another one would be that by federal statute, they have the right to install these in a right of way. So we can't, we can't argue about that it's valid to put them in the right of way. Is that accurate?
I don't believe so. I believe they have the ability to request them in a right of way. They don't have unilateral ability just to install them without any public discretion. In this case, we have a use permit.
Is that our discretion then about that location in a right of way?
Yes, you do have, the two use permits that are before you, you do have the ability to deny based on aesthetics, things of.
I understand.
Okay.
Well, I was trying to isolate that particular issue, but that's, okay. And the urgency ordinance does not apply because it's happened before, after these applications were in. It might suggest some philosophical idea, but it doesn't, it's not authoritative legislation. Is that accurate?
That's correct. Those provisions do not apply. Let me just give you an example, because you've heard me on one hand say, use permit, you have discretion to require certain things because of the conditional use permit than what we currently have in our code. For example, an applicant today will have to give the city a whole host of application submittal materials we currently don't, didn't have the ability to ask for on the front end when these applications were submitted. We only have the list of things that were relative to 5.32, which is not an exhaustive list. 5.30 was created to customize to applications in the public right of way, and we've raised the bar as far as submittal requirements. We've actually enumerated all of the conditions of approval that we can look at, whether a project is within the public right of way or not. But 5.32 is still applicable, as also is the use permit provisions, which do give discretion to place conditions of approval on a project.
Okay. Okay, with that said, I have some comments. And I guess my, I'd like to make just a comment that we all know that Sonoma is a small, dark town, and our architectural heritage and culture are very important. And I think that's really my focus on aesthetics in this regard. To me, this is, this is an aesthetic issue mostly, and I think, I think it really is an important one, even though it's a piece of equipment hanging on a pole on Fifth Street and a couple of other streets. All I can go on are the photographs and sketches that I saw in the report. And to me, these are obtrusive, they look like obtrusive industrial equipment there. And it seems like that is going contrary to what were the trend that we're trying to create here in Sonoma. And I'll give you an example. You indicated you were working in the city of Piedmont on this issue. Is that correct? In the East Bay. And I lived in Piedmont for a couple of decades. And 10 or 15 years ago, there was a neighborhood, there was a plan in the city to go neighborhood by neighborhood in some cohesive way to have the neighbors agree to a bond that would be assessed on their tax bill and have all the utilities undergrounded. And the poles on every, on a lot of the streets of Piedmont were really encumbered with a lot of, a lot of lines and old leaning poles and so forth. So over a period of a year or so, we agreed to do that, and we had it done. I guess my street was, my neighborhood was three or four blocks long and wide and so forth. It was not inexpensive, but the, it was a miraculous change in our neighborhood. It was beautiful. We replaced the poles with street trees, all the lines came down. It just opened everything up and eliminated real eyesores and created dramatic change. Now, it's been discussed here tonight whether we have any kind of a plan to underground the utilities in this town. I've heard conversations over the past couple of years about that and how desirable it would be, particularly on the gateway streets like Broadway. Fifth is certainly a, whatever you, an arterial, it's certainly a lot of people coming and out of town, Spain Street. I can't imagine that that's not going to be, that is a trend in the country and certainly in California. You don't build a new subdivision without undergrounding all of the utilities. And given the fact that we have mixed use and commercial, which allows, commercial and mixed use are demanding a residential component. We have a lot of streets, First Street West that I live on, the southern part of that has a lot of opportunities for development. And Fifth Street does too, where you have underutilized lots, where you could typically have some reasonably dense residential development. And this sounds like a Shaggy Dog story, but I'm getting back to the fact that this could happen on Fifth Street quite easily, and it should happen on First Street West. If these installations would hinder that kind of a major improvement in these streets, which would encourage development, which we really need for housing particularly, I'd be concerned about that. That once these installations are here, and if in fact they proliferate, as, I don't know whether it will or won't, but I've certainly heard the conversation tonight, if they proliferate, it seems like that's going to be a potential obstacle to our doing this undergrounding and really improving some of these neighborhoods and making them more suitable for development. Leaving all that aside, I think that, in my opinion, is that these should not be hung on these poles. I think they're, they're really, they're in your face, and they're industrial looking, and I don't, and I think they deface the neighborhoods. Maybe not in a large way, but they certainly have a potential to do that. So leaving all that aside, I think that the only solution that I see is to make these things much less visible. And I realize there are problems and expenses in vaulting all these things, but I, I think they need to be made as invisible as possible, and vaulting is part of it. And if there's any way to eliminate these, what's left on the pole, I think we should be looking for ways to do that because my main objection is based on aesthetics and development obstacles. Thank you.
Before we get too far down the line here, I just want to call attention to attachment eight that the city attorney referenced earlier. We have to make four findings to approve a use permit. And we can talk about develop, or design guidelines and everything, but if we give, if all of us right here don't think we can make all four of these findings, then I think we're just wasting our time. And I want to call attention to number three. Earlier, I asked the planning director, is there a distinction in our municipal code between residential areas and commercial areas with the implication that these towers are not allowed in residential areas? And finding three says the proposed use is compatible with the existing and future land uses in the vicinity. Now, the Fifth Street Tower has housing nearby. You know, Commissioner Cribb has often talked about putting housing in Safeway. That could be a future land use. The pole on First Street West also has housing not too far. And to Carol Marcus's point, which I thought was excellent, our municipal code calls for the encouragement of housing development within commercial districts. And so if we can't honestly make that finding, I don't see how we can approve these projects.
Yes, I just wanted to make some comments. I'm kind of fading here. I think we're all fading a little bit.
We are, which is why I was trying.
But I just wanted to make, make my feelings known about the proposal. I think that cluttering up utility poles all over town with boxes like this and others will be coming, this is one of the first, okay? I look at it from a strictly aesthetic point of view simply because I don't have the expertise to look at it from a health issue or anything else. But we can look at it from an aesthetic issue, and I think that's what we're supposed to be doing here. And I personally could never support anything that looks like that on poles. I think our streetscape is not up to what should be Sonoma's standards already. You didn't have anything to do with that, obviously, but we have, we have a very low street tree planting program. We have integral curb and sidewalk, which doesn't allow for median tree planting. And we have a lot of really significant streets that could sure use some dressing up. And I totally agree with Commissioner Bohart's comments. Nothing would make, would make this town look better than be able to underground utilities. But I personally will not support any application that doesn't put them in vaults.
I am in favor of a long-term plan of putting everything underground. And I would love to see us put all of our time and effort into that direction rather than doing this and then having to take them all down and put them underground. So I would love to see a long-term plan. But in light of the fact that we don't have that, I am not in favor of vaulting. From the point of view that I think there are hazards to the vaulting. I think they will leak. I think we have to worry for flooding. We do get heavy rains. And I think the noise from the fans is going to be more detrimental than not. I did like the idea of the cage. And I would like to see something creative done with the caging if this is the way it's going to be. I do think it's ugly on the, on the poles as it is, and I would love to see those antennas as high as possible. But again, I'm not in favor of the vaulting, and I would love to see a 10-year limitation. But I think in 10 years, things are going to change so drastically that this isn't even going to be an issue. I'm hoping that more technology will come available.
I'll go next and agree with the aesthetic issue. And I think, I mean, and I don't know how many people would do this on a regular basis, but certainly since this has been coming before us now for some time, I've been looking up a lot more than I used to at the sort of amount of things that are hanging on poles, the amount of boxes that are sitting on sidewalks, and other sorts of things. And it's, it's kind of, I think, a sticky wicket in terms of these things are all part of our fabric of our lives that have evolved over a period of time, you know? Telecommunications, television, electricity, I mean, all these things, transformers, boxes, you know? And I'm not sure what all of them are, but I know there's a lot already. So, you know, to, as the point that's been made before, obviously, the ideal solution would be some sort of comprehensive undergrounding of all those things. And so it, it would seem to me that we wouldn't want to add to the existing clutter. And if, to the extent that we're constrained, and I don't know from a legal perspective too, because I was also on this commission when we approved a, I guess, I didn't, I guess the macro cell tower at Sebastiani Winery. And then that was appealed and upheld by the council and then resulted in a lawsuit because of the FCC regulations. I wouldn't want to make any decisions here that are going to put the city in any kind of legal jeopardy. But certainly if, if tonight's primary purpose is to get direction from a design perspective, then a cage at a minimum and preferably undergrounding would be my direction.
Thanks. I am, we had to go and talk again a little bit about what I brought up with respect to demonstrating the feasibility of looking at options to place installations in, on private property and not in the public right of way. And I know that the applicant has every right to go through the first, his first, its first vehicle, which is the public right of way. But I'm not convinced that, that there are options that are on private property that wouldn't cost any less than vaulting or undergrounding. And I would like to see, at least before we made a decision on, in the public right of way, what, would the costs be associated with obtaining a lease on a private property? And let me explain, like on the Fifth Street West property specifically, there are so many opportunities to place these installations on private property. It doesn't seem to make sense that we couldn't ask that to find out how much it would cost for a lease, what those options would be before we made the decision to place it in the public right of way. With respect to the findings under the municipal code, under what we're charged with, I don't think it's unreasonable to expect that a historic town like Sonoma that relies heavily on its town character for its major industry, which is tourism, to at some point in request that underground, utilities are undergrounded to, to support this industry that the city relies heavily on. And I don't think it has been unreasonable in class for the city of Sonoma to request a higher design standard and aesthetics for all of the other projects that have come before us, such whether they be a hotel or an apartment building or a use permit application for, you know, there's so many things that we look at and scrutinize, down to a sign in front of a bank. So I don't think it's unreasonable to, to ask that this developer be held to the same standard. And if the standard requires vaulting and spending more money, then I think the city, the taxpayers and the people that come to visit this popular tourist destination, they also deserve that consideration. So I'm mostly in favor of vaulting. And with respect to making findings both through the state and also through our own municipal code, encouraging the cluttering of utility poles and creating a blight along pedestrian walkways in our historic downtown, on the First Street West site or on major commercial streets like on the Fifth Street West site, I think it would in reasonably subject the public to visual discomfort by looking at a whole series of these. This is just one of many applications that the city could look at. And it could otherwise be offensive and annoying in nature to travelers and visitors that are coming to our city to spend a lot of money that supports our whole community. So I'm looking at the precedent that's set by allowing one antenna on a utility pole and a second one, and then one down the street. I think that we need to stop the precedent right now and encourage and, and request that these be vaulted as the current municipal code requires. So I'm more in favor of looking at vaulting. And I would like to see, and encourage the applicant to look at private properties that don't, it may find that vaulting versus looking at a long-term lease on a piece of private property may not have any more additional cost. And then, and Commissioner Carrato had discussed placing a limitation on a use permit. And I believe the city attorney said 10 years is something that would be reasonable. And I would encourage any. And I would encourage any approvals to have a sunset clause like that. Specifically on the First Street West proposal, I don't believe caging is an option because if you've been out to that site, you've been out to that sidewalk in that corner, it's just too narrow. The only real option in that case is vaulting. I can't see an above-ground cage. Fifth Street, that's one potential option that the applicant could present to us. But I think we, as a commission and as a community, have the right to make a decision on various options. One could be vaulting. So, but I'm leaning towards and hoping the commission will support a vaulting plan.
If I could ask Lee one other question before I render my comments. I've spent hours reading the packet. And I believe one of the questions that keeps kind of coming up in not only my mind, but I've heard in several minds, is the current need, the coverage that we currently have, is there truly a need for an upgrade?
There's certainly, from the standpoint of achieving, you know, current levels of 4G service. I mean, you can look at this in many ways. The system you have here has good coverage. We drove around here. When it's lightly loaded or when it's not full of everybody using it, there's good signal coverage. But as has been pointed out, when there are a lot of people using this system, we're all sharing the same pipe. And so to answer your question, to be a modern system or to have full 4G capacity, you need additional outlets to target those high-demand areas. And that's what these three sites are.
Thank you. A question to you, to council, please. The applications are for 4G technology. At some point, it's going to, I'm speculating that it's going to be advanced to 5G. Would such an upgrade require a resubmital for use permit on an upgraded technology like that?
I'm going to answer one portion of that, but I'm also going to ask Mr. Athlebach because it is also a technical question, I think. My understanding is 5G technology is not currently available. I think for the planning commission's concern tonight, the question about service, the question about the potential impacts of the planning commission's decision, to kind of boil it down, under federal law, the city cannot effectively prohibit a provider from providing service. And how that is defined is very much in flux right now under federal law. So the standard is effective prohibition of service by any decision made by the city. The FCC order has been discussed a little bit earlier. The FCC order interprets that differently from the courts and particularly the Ninth Circuit, which we are in, which is the significant gap in coverage, which would mean that existing coverage, there is a gap in that existing coverage, not in forward-looking service or some newer service that may come along, as I understand it. The FCC order speaks more in terms of service that is forward-looking, merely just impeding improvement of service or extending service out to other areas. The FCC order is currently a subject of litigation. So the law is very much in flux, but for the purposes of the planning commission, because this has come up, the standard is really the effective prohibition and also nondiscrimination with respect to the users of the companies that provide the utilities. So that's, you know, basically, unfortunately, it's not a very clear standard that I can give you tonight because the law is very much in flux. But as far as the legal question, significant gap in coverage has been the standard for what prohibition is. And Mr. Athlebach can speak to coverage and to what would happen if 5G were to come along. But from a legal perspective, we look at existing coverage now, unless you look at the FCC order, which speaks more in terms of coverage that could be later in time and not allowing an expansion of service. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Athlebach.
Well, I think I might be a little hazy too on that. In the context, if they're going to be installing new services, so-called 5G services, I think it's fairly obvious that the equipment that's there now would remain in place for a reasonable period of time. And so my assumption would be that there would be some form of additional equipment, either additional hardware and radios, possibly some antenna things. So I think the answer is there'd be more mass out there. How much more, it might be the minimalist. I can't really, really answer that question. But it's hard to imagine there'd be less mass. The other thing that I think that's clear from the management, the work we did here, and you had asked me earlier before the meeting why we had so much paperwork here. We wanted to try to get all the information to you. There is no significant gap in coverage here. What I mean by that is you turn on a cell phone anywhere here and it works. It may not be working perfectly, but in the three days that we drove around, I found no place that I couldn't disconnect, was disconnected or any problems in the service. So there's nothing, the way I interpret significant gap, and I'm certainly not a lawyer, the cell system works. The issue here is that, and it's pretty clear in the report we gave you, is that there are pockets where there is only one service, the seven or megahertz service, not all the full capacity.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add to that, there's another, I heard another part of the question, and correct me if I'm wrong. But our current, excuse me, our new urgency ordinance does address the question of new technology when it becomes available and what does that do to a use permit that you've granted. So I'll just read the new language out of 5.30, because certainly we could place this or something similar to it if it's a concern of the commission relative to the applications when we address them. And the current, the new ordinance says, "Where feasible, as new technology becomes available, the permity shall do two things. One, place above-ground wireless telecommunications facilities below ground, including but not limited to accessory equipment that has been mounted to a telecommunications tower or mounted on the ground. And secondly, replace larger, more visually intrusive facilities with smaller, less visually intrusive facilities after receiving all necessary permits and approvals required pursuant to the municipal code." So notwithstanding the discussion we've had earlier about these three versus future permits in the future, who would, those applicants that would be subject to 5.30, we will have the ability to require new technology, come back to the commission because of what Lee said, when new technologies come forward, there will be better ways of minimizing, making the things smaller, less intrusive, less visually a problem.
I have a question for the two applications and with the new urgency ordinance. So my understanding is, once these applications are approved, the new standard is that you can't have any new antenna within or installation facility within 1,500 feet? And then the other parameter is you can't have anything in a residential zone? Would it be possible, the next time our commission meets for these two particular applications, is to understand with the new ordinance in effect and the underlying zoning, where, if any, there could be any additional antennas? So we, as a commission, can understand really the limitations now that are put on the telecommunications franchises? Because if, moving forward, we have those parameters in place, you know, really what is it that we're looking at? Is it this grand proliferation of antennas or, you know? I'm assuming that moving forward, the new ordinance is going to take effect. So we won't see 10 cellular antennas on Fifth Street West. It's, we might have co-location of the use of one utility pole. Maybe somebody else could go on that one, but I can't. I don't, I'm assuming that you can't add any additional ones within 1,500 feet.
So we can do the math, we can draw a map. The problem with the map, though, I'll tell you, is that, because it's easy to draw 1,500-foot radius around the existing, excuse me, the proposed locations. And we can certainly see the districts that it will impact. We're not able to figure out where every residence is relative to the 1,500 feet.
Oh, no, I'm just saying residential zones.
Yeah, residential districts, we can do that, certainly, yeah.
Residential zones versus like, you know, where those three towers are versus like where additional ones could go.
We can superimpose the 1,500-foot radius around the three locations and see where the residential zones are relative to that.
And then the other thing has to do with just having a map, a spatial map of potential areas where future applications can take place. So the commission has an understanding of where they could go in the future, moving forward.
Okay, well, let me go ahead and conclude this portion with some of my own comments. I support several of the comments shared by my fellow commissioners. One in particular, I think there should be some sort of sunset or timeframe of which the use permit would have to be revisited. I do value the visual aesthetic of this small town. And it's arguably one of the things that makes this town fairly charming is its scale and the history and the plaza. So I really would like to challenge the applicant to think as far outside the box as is feasible, to really say, how can we best provide this service, but do it in a way that, I won't say it's benign, but do it as aesthetically thoughtful way as possible. Because unfortunately, there has been utility precedents set. And that was years and years and years ago where we have these poles and these wires strung all over the place. But I'm convinced that, and please don't take offense, adding ugly to ugly doesn't equal good. And so my challenges or my comments are to do whatever we can to integrate. I think when you're back doing the bigger mackerel towers throughout the state, there was a real concerted effort to doll them up, dress them up. I love the idea of expanding the zone where we may be able to, quote, hide them into the private property. It may not be the easiest route, but I don't think Verizon's journey has ever been particularly easy, given what you're trying to do. So I really would suggest, if at all possible, if you could somehow roll that back in as far as a consideration, because it just seems like indiscreet little antennas sticking up above existing buildings, even teasing the height limitations, I think could be much less visually intrusive, I guess, is one thought. I think cages on some locations might, should improve, depending upon, again, the physical dimensions and whatever some of the existing challenges are associated with another element above ground. I do support vaults, not easy. It's not particularly convenient, but it is feasible. And I'm hoping that there's a parallel with the technology of how vaults are constructed and with the increased technology of all of our other equipment to think that we'll continue, I mean, we'll continue to somehow improve the ventilation, the circulation and that when it does rain and it heads down into the lowest point, that the sump pump will come on on a reliable basis because underground certainly helps visually. I also was impressed with the photo illustration that the director showed of supposedly the 5G that doesn't exist but exists in Sacramento, maybe on a test basis. But that was a pretty discreet profile element. And again, with all of the creative juices that we have in this state, I say, challenge with good design and make it as, again, as quiet as you possibly can. So I can only reiterate that aesthetics are important. And yes, aesthetics can be somewhat subjective, but we have a pretty special community. And we want to put forth every effort to keep it that way. So those are my comments.
Mr. Chair, I think we have an adequate direction. We can proceed to 007. I'd suggest maybe another five-minute break, if that's okay.
Yes. And Mr. McDonald, as much as I, thank you. And Mr. McDonald, as much as I, thank you.
Thank you, and we're going to try to be brief. We appreciate everybody staying here late. And it comes on. Thank you. This is very similar in scope and scale to the other ones that we've talked about at some length this evening. I'm Mark Peters, the CBR Group with the applicant. The staff showed the overview, and it also is in a commercial district. We have some good feedback from you tonight about what your areas of concern are, what you want us to come back and look at. We already have some ideas that we've been discussing about this facility that we might could have some solutions that you might support, and we will work with staff on those solutions. There's been a... There was a comment about undergrounding that's come up several times tonight. I just want to say that having these facilities on poles doesn't prevent undergrounding, and it's conditioned that way in a lot of jurisdictions that we work in. And generally, when you underground, you put up light poles, and I will say that we have some good light pole designs to relocate these facilities onto city of light poles. There needs to be some discussion between the city and Verizon as an agreement to use those city assets. If Verizon has an apartment for that, and we can send you the right people, they can talk to the right people at the city. And really, undergrounding or future undergrounding shouldn't be a prohibitive condition for these types of facilities, because we will work with you on relocating the facility to an appropriate structure if the wood poles disappear. And with that, I'll let Paul speak a little bit.
No, no slides. I've got like one minute of legal commercial and then some thoughts. Legal commercial. To make findings, you have to have substantial evidence to make your findings. We think the statements in the CTC report that there's a gap in AWS and PCS services is a significant gap, and that the discrimination has to be unreasonable. So there's case law that you can discriminate as long as you have a reason behind it. So too many poles can be a reason for discriminating, saying the next guy can't go in. Now, I want to step back. I mentioned that Verizon has not vaulting in Northern California because of operational problems, but we are working with a number of communities with thoughtful, out-of-the-box solutions. I mentioned in Cupertino, we're actually installing a light standard that has about a four-foot box. The radios are in the base of the light standard, and the light standard goes up to decorative light standards, and the antenna, it's about a two-foot antenna on top of the light standard. So Verizon could put in a City of Sonoma pole with some kind of design that you like. In Palo Alto, we have poles where we have put what would be considered a transfer mailbox. You know, the transfer mailboxes that mailmen use all the time. And the radios are actually contained in a mailbox. Another one's contained in a trash can. And then there are also benches, other street furniture that can be used next to a pole or next to a new pole. Or next... In Napa, we've recently gotten approval for a standalone pole. It's a thin, narrow standalone pole with an antenna on top. So if you give us the direction and the opportunity, we can try and work with the planning director or planning department, and he may tell us that we're all wet and those ideas are terrible, but we would appreciate the opportunity to try and experiment. We try to use, at the outset, existing vertical infrastructure, because the concept is that we're not adding a new structure to the right of way. We're not adding to the clutter of the right of way. But if this is unacceptable, and you're looking for some out-of-the-box solution, I want to say that we're willing to consider those out-of-the-box solutions, and they've been successful in other jurisdictions. And that concludes my remarks. And again, we appreciate all your time and effort in listening to Verizon. I have to say, once again, we're really not here to make the town ugly or to radiate people. We're here to provide an essential service, which we think is incredibly important. And I just stepped outside. I don't know if you have, but it's very smoky out there. And these are the times these networks need to function. During the fire a year ago, Verizon's network was up 97%. And I guess I'll close by saying, when I had to leave Fountain Grove at 2:00 in the morning with my family, the only thing working was my Verizon phone. So it is critical and important infrastructure, and we're trying to provide that for Sonoma and keep it working.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make a quick comment, and perhaps the applicant can talk about that, about this. I am concerned that if there's any kind of modification to the submittal, not so much worried about working through the mechanics of that, but I am concerned about the agreement that the city's entered into with respect to timelines on the back end in 2019 that we do need to act. I wouldn't want the actions of playing ping pong with the applicant. I'm off of getting better design, trust me. I just don't want to hamstring the city council, because there is a timeline should these applications be appealed to the council. I'm not sure why the lights are going off. That's not me, I don't think.
Ambiance?
We've rented into two agreements with the city, and obviously Verizon would have to agree, but we would accommodate that with the agreement amendments.
So Mr. Albrecht and I spoke a few minutes ago, and I think we agreed that we would need to extend, and Verizon would agree, to extend the modifications agreement that is in the packet beyond the date. The date in that agreement is by no later than March 4, 2019. The city would make a final determination on the three commercial applications. So we would need to extend that out maybe two months.
Sorry.
Shall we extend out dates for two months?
I would have to get clarification from the client. March is actually a pretty long time, but we would definitely...
Well, in case it goes to the city council, then it's not too long. Holidays are coming up, so if we have two more meetings regarding the new designs...
I would say yes, definitely. Well, I can't say yes, definitely.
All right. Well, there's some agreement here at least.
I have the client with me.
It will extend.
Well, they're discussing. We've always endeavored to be as cooperative with the city as we can be.
From a planning perspective, I'd be interested in looking at the street light alternative, although I'm sure there's going to be some practical difficulties in the placement of it. I'm assuming that those would be on net new poles, in other words, somewhere along the street, infrastructure generally in the area. So we can certainly talk about that if there's going to be an agreement to extend the time.
If we're going to the city council two months, we're hoping to come to an answer so it doesn't, you know, so it's something that works for the community.
Any questions for the applicants?
Aren't we past questions?
Well, for the applicant to do the submittal.
Okay, I'm going to ask a question. I mean, this, to me, I mean, I don't like the support structure, but I love the antenna on top. I mean, if I'm going to love an antenna, but why aren't the other ones like that?
12 is like this, has the antenna on top. 6 has the antenna on what we call a mid-mount, and that has to do with the particular arrangement of the wires on top of the pole. It's not as suitable for a pole top. PG&E controls the top of the pole. There's some. I could go on until wee hours in the morning about general order 95 and all the regulations that go into it, but suffice to say that. There's some reason behind it.
And if I could just point out for the record, this is David being silly, but this is '07, not '06. It's on the screen right now. Because, as he just said, '06 is the mid-mount, if you will. Both 12 and this are the ones with the antenna on the top, yeah. And they're both net new poles.
Do you know what the reasoning and rationale was behind prohibiting these antennas in residential districts?
I do not know.
But a distinction was made, so there must have been a reason. Is that based on the Telecommunications Act, or...?
I think that was most likely based on the fact that they were the large towers at that time, and you would not want large towers in residential districts. So I don't know that it was terribly uncommon, but certainly our ordinance did have that.
How tall is a typical... What is that called, a macro tower?
They can vary in height, anywhere from 45 to 90 feet, depending on the amount.
Well, actually, we've done a number of them that are close to 300 feet. So it depends where they are in rural areas. Generally speaking, these older ordinances only dealt with the macro towers. And those towers, the idea was to get them into commercial areas, and the idea was also to cluster the users together. In other words, you would have multiple carriers on the same facility, which gave it a de facto industrial kind of look to it, and that's where pretty much all of these came up with. What has happened now is as they start to move into the communities, we've started to use commercial buildings and now smaller antennas. I did want to throw something out here that's a gratuitous point, and that is that one of the options we haven't talked about here, while you're looking at options, is using lower-power radios and more sites. Some communities have looked at this and said, you know, "I'm concerned about the higher power of these radios. We're willing to accept more sites, maybe somewhat lower, with smaller radios and such." So there, you know, if the concept of small cell is viable, there's the alternative of how it looks visually, and there's also the sizing aspect of it, too, that's a variable.
Earlier, there was a discussion about a sort of desire to co-locate on a single pole. So let's say hypothetically that that was to be, and we were going to move forward, and this was going to be a co-located pole. Does the antenna on top function for all the carriers, or is this just a Verizon antenna?
These antennas can be made to function for multiple carriers. They can be used by... They are designed as a generic antenna in many cases for that use.
Would each carrier have a different radio unit?
They'd have to have a different radio unit, yes.
So if four carriers are on this pole, you would, and we weren't volunteering...
Yeah, you wouldn't want four of these, you wouldn't want four carriers on this pole with all these radios. That's why it was pointed out that one of the options you can look at is a lower-power radio, and then you can do that. But what you end up with is physically, you could get to a point where the radios would be so large and have so much energy there, you would not meet the emission requirements very, very quickly.
If I could add to that from the applicant's perspective, because there has been mention about co-location and the concern about having four or five carriers. There are those regulations I talked about, about general order 95, have a lot of instruction on where and how the utility providers can utilize parts of the pole. Whereas, you know, Mr. Afaba is correct in that technically it is possible to have a neutrally hosted system that's fed from somewhere else. From a practical consideration on wood utility poles, it really doesn't work, because there's just not enough space on the pole to utilize. You can only, you have to leave certain spaces of the pole open for utility linemen to climb the pole. There is practical considerations with conduit size, and because of that, I don't really know of even a single co-located wood utility pole in California.
Yeah. I'll say that, now just three quick stories. Six years ago, Palo Alto asked for co-located poles. We showed them the co-located pole design, they hated it, because it was too much stuff on one pole. So they went back to single-carrier on pole because of the, and that's what you have in Palo Alto today. With respect to multiple, there's quickly Piedmont approved facilities with vaulting. Crown Castle sued because they didn't want to vault, and the settlement was to use small radios, and they doubled the number of facilities in order to accommodate the smaller, low-wattage radios. And my last quick story is Capitola. I had an ordinance that banned residential facilities. There were, it turned out, 97% of the community was off-limits. They were sued, and that was deemed to be a prohibition of service, and so Capitola ended up having to approve, modifying their ordinance and allowing for facilities. So three quick stories about the issues you were discussing.
Mr. Chair, if I can go back to my own story on this particular slide, just for the record again, the particular antenna that they're showing off to the right-hand side is also not the correct antenna for this particular set of photographs, so it's not that big of a deal. I just want to point it out. Second thing, though, I think, though, is to the question about co-location. Should you require co-location at this particular address of this facility, and you required vaulting, by the math, you wouldn't be able to get another vault for another provider so close to here, because you might be cramped in the sidewalk area. But, you know, I think that is a function between the number of co-locations and the ability to do the vaults on the ground.
It's important to know, when you talk about vault and possibly additional carriers, is once one of these vaults goes into the sidewalk, there's not going to be any utilities that can pass that vault. It's too deep to go under it, and there's not enough space to go around it in the right of way, and will effectively prohibit other utilities from transversing that space.
Is the urgency ordinance, does that sunset at some point, or is that just indefinite until they decide to change it?
The intention is that the city will be putting together a regular ordinance, going through the regular process, and when that ordinance is adopted, then the urgency ordinance will be repealed.
Because I'm just trying to think practically, some of the restrictions in the urgency ordinance make me think that after these three applications, how is this going to work with new applications and companies? And so it seems like there needs to be probably a standard ordinance at some point.
That's the goal, but maybe, John, the urgency ordinance is in place for a year. Do we have a time period in which we have to adopt a regular ordinance to replace the one? Maybe identical?
It's different from a moratorium ordinance. So it's just an urgency ordinance in that it was adopted at the first reading, but the city will be going through the process of replacing it with a regular ordinance.
No more questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. And now I'd like to open it back up for the public, and please feel free to come to the dais and speak. And thank you.
I think this gentleman said that this 453 is commercial. It's commercial residential. Is it okay that I'm going to say this? Okay. It's commercial residential, and next door to it is the Wells Fargo mortgage office, and in the back of that, there's two duplexes. So you've got commercial and residential in two parcels. And we're the next parcel. We're 50 by 200 feet. We have nothing in the back. When we were younger, we had vegetable garden galore, and we gave them all away to the neighbors. And if you say you want to lease this whatever monstrosity, if you want to put it on the back of our property, I'm going to tell you, no way in H-E-L-L will we lease. Thank you.
It's been a long night. My name's Frank. I live next to Rosemary. I live at 431 Second Street West. You folks call, or everybody talks about this particular area being commercial. I disagree. This is a mixed-use area. There are, just beyond the pole going north, there's four units there, four apartments. On the opposite side of the street is also apartments, heavy residential area to the north, and the northeast, going towards Spain and down Church Street. They spoke about public outreach. This is the first time I've heard about this, other than a notice on a telephone pole out in front of my house. And this gentleman back here and I discussing it on the street one day. I think there needs to be more public involvement. I think you folks have an obligation to the folks of Sonoma to publicize it and bring them in here to get more information. We showed some people here today. I was amazed at the fact that there wasn't more in attendance. I'm feeling personally that Sonoma's being bullied by the FCC or these federal agencies that say that they can come in here and do whatever they want on any pole that they want. Initially, I saw these folks not wanting to vault, not wanting to put stands out near the sidewalks, whatever you call it, and now they seem to be more cooperative. So at any price, they want to get in here. They haven't spoken anything about health issues other than ADA compliance. Well, that raises the hair on the back of anybody's neck, because you have an obligation to clearly look at that. So I would like to see more public outreach. This is a huge issue for Sonoma, aesthetically and health-wise. I encourage you, with regards to 007, I encourage you to not put anything out there. That's my personal opinion. And I think there are some health issues. I've heard a lot of testimony tonight. I know you've heard the testimony, too. So I'm asking you to please consider that for people that live in the area. I think there's other options. Thank you.
Carol Marcus, 873 First Street West. I just wanted to reiterate, because I've heard talk about a 10-year window to revisit the use permit, should you be granting a use permit at some point. The current ordinance, 5.32.090, says that the life of the permit is five years, at which point it shall be revisited. Thank you.
Mark Martholler, 146 East Spain. I want to just, awfully tired, and it's been a lot of discussion here tonight. I just want to comment on commercial versus residential mixed use, and just reaffirm that this is a very small town, and, you know, the commercial mixed-use pole at near 453, right near this lady's house, that pole is only, her house is only approximately 110 feet away from that pole. I've been in that neighborhood. I've walked up and down the street, Church Street and Second Street West. There's houses everywhere. So the spirit of, the intent of commercial versus residential mixed use, it doesn't seem to be, it's not working. You know, there's just houses and people living so close. It really isn't commercial. It's just, you know, I couldn't put a coal plant in the middle of a neighborhood or open a liquor store in the middle of houses, and, you know, if my coal plant was polluting, that's the reach of a coal plant, and you'd have to regulate emissions. Well, the emissions coming off of these facilities are going far and wide. So you have a pole that's 10 feet from the border of, you know, commercial, residential. You can't see it, but it's like, you know, it's like a, you build a building and a structure is just going 110 feet over this woman's house. You know, it's just going everywhere. It's pollution. So I don't know how that figures into regulating, or whatever the word is, to control that, but it's, just because it's invisible doesn't mean it's not there, and it's not affecting people and their property values, even though those aren't allowed to be talked about. But just saying, the spirit of the designation of commercial is just not really working in Sonoma. Thank you.
Lynn Marie DeVincent, 65 Guadalajara. Thank you so much for your perseverance on this. So Frank, I really appreciated his comments about how important an issue this is and why there weren't people down the sidewalk tonight. So this is my area, community outreach. And I'll tell you, the most common response I get when I tell people, "Hey, you got to come to this. This is really important. These health issues are real." And they say, "Who is going to go up against Verizon?" So we're such a litigious, or however you say it, nation. And the attorney said quickly in one of his comments that the FCC is under litigation. So not everybody here will understand the more complex explanation of that. The new FCC regulations that are being reviewed right now are so horrible that cities all over are suing the FCC. That's what's happening. And that is related to this issue that we're at tonight, because I know that one of the reasons the city is worried is because of what they just said. Oh, they said, well, Piedmont, you know, Crown Castle, which is a little different from Verizon, but similar, I think. Well, they rejected us, and they rejected Crown Castle, and so they got sued, and so they took the small radios. And he said it with pride. Is this really how we have to live? That you're going to put us at risk, our health at risk, out of just the fear of being sued? I don't know. Maybe Sonoma needs to get on board the train with that lawsuit against the FCC. Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in here. John Duffy, 853 Fifth Street East. This is governmental bureaucracy and private corporations. So this is fascism, and this is toxic fascism, and we're all experiencing now, and we're all under it. So feel it. This is it. Good night.
Do I see anyone else that would like to come forward? And do you applicant wish to have a rebuttal?
We do. And if I could, if I could ask, Bill, could you come up and just...
So there's been a number of comments throughout the evening, and I think Bill will be brief about health and safety. And we brought an outside expert who hasn't spoken tonight, and just to give a few words about the facilities, the standard, and kind of what the standard also means.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Bill Hammett. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of California. My firm of 20 is located two blocks away. We've been practicing this field for 30-plus years. As engineers, our job is to assess the compliance with the safety standards, and McGraw-Hills published a book I wrote on this topic. We do work for carriers, we do work for cities, we're peer review in several cities, we work for landlords. As engineers, our job is straightforward. What are the numbers? How do they compare? I thought Mr. Afaba did a great job in terms of laying the groundwork. A couple of those slides I would have enjoyed, as he would have, I'm sure, going on at more length on some of those. So I don't know what more I can add at this point. Certainly, the issue of preemption was very clearly hit, and that's a key. I mentioned to one of the attendees during the break that it was Congress that set the preemption. It wasn't the FCC on its own bureaucratic something. It was Congress that said there'll be one standard throughout the country, and the FCC was told to set it. So that's a key point. But the standards have been revised, continue to be revised. The FCC hasn't adopted new standards, because the one they adopted in '96 is still a valid standard. The new one was just voted on this year, the US standard, C95.1. You can Google it. That's the new one coming up. They're just voting on it now. It'll be... just voting on it now. It'll be probably released late this year, early next. It's still the same standard as it was. The continued research has not driven the need to tighten the standards. I, I know it's late. I don't want to take any more time, but I'm happy to answer anything else if you've got a question for me. Thank you.
If you have any design direction on the suggestions we made, that would be helpful, but we can wait for that.
So seeing no migration up to the dais, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back here for Commissioner Comett.
Can you put the zoning map back up real quick?
I'll do it while you keep talking, if that's okay.
Okay.
I just disconnected everything.
Well, before you do that--
Which, the zoning map from which one?
Well, I mean, you just had like a star where it was on the--
For all three--
No, just this one.
Okay.
When it comes to aesthetics, obviously, I think that's extremely important in Sonoma. I think it's extremely important on this street. I think a lot of these side streets off the plaza, you know, aesthetics, this is in the historic district, and so this is in a zoning map. So I, yeah, well, anyway, so obviously, aesthetics are important, and I share my fellow commissioners' concerns about that. In terms of, again, making the findings, if you look at the star there, I mean, that, you know, I mean, is very close to yellow, which is a medium-density residential area. And so in terms of the location of this one, you know, again, I made an argument in the previous plan that, you know, currently our municipal code doesn't desire facilities like this in residential districts. And so it's hard for me to say it's compatible with the existing land uses in the vicinity. So again, especially with this one, I think you could make a reasonable case for the other ones as well, based on neighboring residential and potential future land uses in the, in the zone, that it would be hard to make finding three. But for this one, I mean, I don't know how much closer you can get to residential areas. So I also have concerns about that.
Okay. So if we go with a light pole, can you move it down a little bit closer to, more into the commercial, and get it away from that residential?
Yes, we can.
Okay, okay. And so I'm an out-of-the-box person and everything, so I'm open to hearing some out-of-the-box ideas. And that light pole idea, I mean, out of all of the three of them, this one, to me, is the most acceptable. And, you know, I listened to Commissioner McDonald about the vaulting. I'm concerned about vaulting because of other issues, but I do believe it should go underground. And if you put that antenna on the top and the support equipment underground, I, I don't see any visual impact. So, so I'm open to ideas.
I appreciate that, and we've taken note of that. I can't tell you what we can do. We have some technical work to do to make sure that we offer you feasible solutions, and, and we will be working with staff and come back again with some of those.
And then my question to staff, is Carol right? Is it five years for the, is it a five-year?
Well, state law would preclude a permit that is less than 10 years, but there, there may be a provision, I'm not looking at it right now, but there may be a provision that says that it can be reviewed--
Okay.
--but it wouldn't expire after five years.
I'm all for the alternative plans, like the light pole, or street furniture, or something like that, just to disguise the equipment.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add before Commissioner Bahar, I'm just trying to go through my mind. We've just heard that the applicant would be willing to go a couple more months, to May or so, let's say, for example, that's the timeline. I'm not so much worried about that date going out than I am fixing a date that they do a resubmital, so I can then determine when the date is on the back end, because I'd hate for us during the holiday season to not see a new plan and have that presented where, you know, we're into January, February. Let's say, I'm just saying, those timelines, that would then further hamstring, you know, us on the backside as well. Towards the May date. So I don't know if two months is a magic date, other than that I'm more interested in the front-end side of it, getting a new submittal that they want to present.
Are you suggesting that to have a special hearing in December, it doesn't give enough time for notice, so?
No, I'm just worried about the two months being an artificial date that's kind of interconnected with when they do resubmit something.
So I think the question would be to the applicant, when do they believe they'd be able to provide staff, so that this could come back to plan and commission with the new designs?
I would love to tell you that we could do it super, super quick and be back tomorrow, but we do have some work to do. And I can't tell you, with, with all the things that we've talked about tonight, it's sort of difficult for me to put a specific date on it, but I think we're talking about weeks, and maybe some of how long it's going to take us to resubmit might be how far we go with other submittal materials or requirements. In other words, if we produce a light pole, how far down the road of, of documentation do we need? And we can work with staff with that. As far as guidance on how long it might take us, I think 30 days would be comfortable to a resubmittal from today to talk about. I'm not sure where that puts you with time for, for you, for your review and preparation for, for a hearing. I know we talked about a second hearing. The date of that was--
December.
December--
We were hoping to shoot for December 13th, but at the same time, I'm just trying to figure out how to toll the time, perhaps--
How much time do you need, and I can maybe--
Well, no, I don't want to work on it that way. What I want to do is say, I've got the March date right now--
Yes.
And the further you get towards that before I get a submittal, means I've got to back off on the back end. So, you know, if you want an extra 60 days, then the 60 days will work.
We won't need 60 days.
Okay. So then, let's stay with May, then, as far as the date. Changing it from March to May, that'll be fine. That should work, it sounds like.
So to be clear, there'll be two months for each of the dates that are in the modifications agreement. Two months out for each--
I think that's acceptable.
Well, nothing new. I'll try to summarize, and that's merely to suggest that it be just minimal visual impact on the scene. And I, I don't have any solutions, because I'm not an expert at it, but the vaulting seems like one part of the process. That's really it. I don't want to repeat what I said earlier. Thank you. I really don't have much more to add, but I do have a couple of, of comments I do want to share. It has been repeatedly said a couple of times this evening that we, the commissioners, our hands are kind of tied somewhat when it comes to health issues. And we certainly have heard a lot of passionate discussion this evening about health issues. Even though we may not formally be able to move on it, we're hearing it. And I'm a typical guy. When there's a problem, I want to fix it, but I can't. But what I do want to encourage is share what was said at the city council meeting Monday night, when the urgent ordinance was passed. One of the council members said, because somebody had suggested that they have no voice. Well, I strongly suggest to continue a dialogue with whoever your congressman is, because Mr. Hammett said that it wasn't FCC, it were the politicians that set a lot of these regulations, or, and so I would, again, strongly encourage that, as you can, communicate your concerns to them, so that they hear a very audible voice from Sonoma. So with that, I didn't mean to get too sidetracked. So I believe you've heard enough.
Yeah, I believe we've heard enough. It's getting late. Did we close the public hearing on the last item? Thank you.
Thank you. All is good. So items for discussion, I hope we have none, because we've discussed for a long time.
Wait a minute. I'm just joking.
Thank you. I think we'd like to defer any issues update till the next time we gather. Comments from the commission? I see none. I have asked for a motion to be adjourned?
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you for coming out.